And we thank you for the opportunity to bring in new officers and we just ask your blessings of safety and well-being for these new members and all of the police force and firefighters and all those who serve this great city. Bless us now as we go about caring for the business of the City of Newcastle now. May we make discussions and decisions that are well-informed and may we honor you and always, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united on end of this world with liberty and justice for all.
This is a call to the November 10, 2025 meeting Newcastle Public Works Authority's order for a final on the agenda is roll call.
Carl Now, Jean Reed, Todd Deamico, Mike Colleton, Marcy White, Carl Now.
Item number two, discussion on possible action on approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion second for approval of the agenda.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd Deamico?
Yes.
Mike Colleton?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Now?
Yes. Item number three, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for any citizen to comment on any matter related to the City of Newcastle Public Works that is not on the agenda. Might remind any potential speakers, the call speakers should clearly state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes per person with only one speaking opportunity. Board members will not respond to comments or questions. The chair may end the comment period at his discretion and prior authorization is required for distribution materials or to approach the board. At this time, is there any public comment concerning the City of Newcastle Public Works that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, move to item number four, consent agenda. Is there any item any member of the board desires to be removed and addressed individually? Seeing none, item number four, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent.
Motion second for approval of the consent agenda.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd Deamico?
Yes.
Mike Colleton?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Now?
Yes. Item number five, discussion of possible action on any items removed from the consent agenda. We know action on that agenda item. Item number six, acknowledgement receipt of independent audit report for the fifth figure 2023, 2024 from HBC CPAs and Advisors, Chris Heim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chris Heim with HBC CPAs. I know this is some dated information, so I'll be brief. We actually performed two audits and I will go over our two reports that we issued and related to those and then hit some financial highlights real quick. But I'm going to start off on page five, which is our auditor's report. And just go over the first two paragraphs here. The first paragraph just states that we have audited these financial statements and the second paragraph states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So that is a clean opinion and that's the best opinion that we can offer as auditors. So it's good news on the audit opinion. So what does that actually mean? That means that the numbers that are subsequent to the report can be relied upon by the council and outside agencies and things of that nature. So from there, I'm going to go to page nine. Just talk about three financial highlights that happened during the year. The first bullet point there, as reported on modified cash basis, the statement of net position increased by 2.8 million. That is essentially the net profit for the city for that year. So as the city as a whole, when you combine all the funds and everything, 2.8 million. The second bullet point, at June 30, '24, the government funds reported combined any fund balance on modified cash basis at 8 million, which I will discuss that here in a second. And then the third bullet point, the unassigned fund balance on the general fund was 1.4 million or 13.4% of general fund revenues. So what that means is it's not unlike an emergency fund or the general fund. And when looking at other cities, what's a healthy kind of reserve or unassigned fund balance? And that's between 10 and 30%. So 30% would be very good and then 10% is kind of where you would want to be above that. So that's a healthy unassigned fund balance for the general fund. Some big transactions that happened during 2024. Landen for economic development, a million, the wastewater treatment plant, 16 million, fire station, 10 million. So there was a lot, the animal shelter, there was a lot of activity going on in these 2024 financial statements. So from there, I'm going to go to page 21. And just talk about that unassigned fund balance there on the general fund is the third financial highlight there, 1.4 million. And again, not unlike an emergency fund for the general fund at June 30, 2024, you're setting about 13% of your total revenues, which if you go to the next page on page Just hit this very briefly and we'll see some of the capital outlay on that general fund column. Revenues increased by about 300,000 compared to the prior year. And then if you go down the expenditures section, you'll see capital outlay towards the bottom, just within the general fund, 13 million for 2024. So significant expenditures just in the general fund. And then you'll see the loan proceeds at the very bottom of around 12 million. And then the third line item to the bottom, negative 325,000, just for the general fund, that's the...
I don't think we're following.
Oh, I'm sorry.
22.
I thought you said 25. I'm so sorry.
Oh. I don't see any of this. I don't understand this. Okay, I'm going to go.
You'll see the capital outlay towards the middle of the page, 13 million. And then the offset for that towards the bottom, the loan proceeds of around 12 million. So and then you'll see the net profit or the net change in fund balance, which is your profit for the general fund at the bottom there. So now I will go to page 25. Sorry about that. And I'm only going to go over one number here and look at the enterprise fund column, the 2.5 million at the very bottom. Again, similar, I'm just taking a snapshot of where you're at at June 30. The unrestricted, again, not unlike an emergency fund, 2.5 million, you're close to 40% of revenues for the enterprise fund. So another healthy unrestricted net position for the enterprise fund. The, I'm going to go to page 53 after that. I'm skipping a lot, but what the note disclosures state, the ones that we just skipped over is just more detail of the numbers that are up front. So if you want any information about debt, there's about six or seven pages on that. Capital assets that you purchased, again, another six or seven pages from there. So our second report though, issue and related to the audit, this is what we call a byproduct of what we do. We don't set out to find findings or compliance issues with the engagement. However, as we're performing our audit procedures, if there's internal control issues or compliance issues, we then bring it up in a report. And over the years, you haven't had any findings when we've worked on it. The only thing that came up this year was there was, I'm sorry, under collateralized within the Sooner Bank and that was just a timing issue. That's going to be corrected and anticipated to go away in the future. But the amount wasn't significant compared to what the balances that you have. It's just a compliance issue and we had to put it in the report there. So moving to page 55, when I said we did two audits, the first report that we went over was the auditor's report for the financial statements. If you receive and expend over 750,000 in federal funding, you're required to have what's called a single audit. You actually received around 15 million and so then that has to have a separate audit and that's a compliance audit. So it's a lot different from a financial statement audit where we're trying to get comfortable with the numbers and we're auditing the numbers. Here, we are just auditing compliance and did you do what the grant told you to do and did you abide by the grant? And so we're not really auditing numbers, we're auditing compliance. And so I'm just going to go over the first two paragraphs. We have audited the City of Newcastle's compliance and then the second paragraph states, "In our opinion, City of Newcastle complied in all material respects." So again, that's the best opinion that you can get, that you complied with the grant agreement. So all in all, I guess you can go to page 57 and that'll just show the grants that you received and what those were for. And that's the compliance audit that we did on those federal funds right there. So all in all, a good report, clean report on the audit, clean report on compliance. And from there, I will open it up to any questions that you might have.
Questions for Chris? Are there any, I don't know, any kind of motion for acknowledgement?
I'm going to acknowledge. I'll say it.
Motion second for approval of item number six.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd Deamico?
Yes.
Mike Colleton?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Now?
Yes. Thank you very much, Chris. Have a good evening. Item number seven, discussion of possible action on rate increases for water usage.
Mail would you hand your fees?
I left.
Endless.
No, sorry. Why is it not happening?
That's me.
Okay.
Black and white now.
Somewhere on that page.
Here's me, I just want to see that screen.
He knows exactly where everything is.
Apparently not.
Not on this one, I don't.
That looks like my desk, but my computer's clean.
Crazy. Almost do it this way.
What am I here?
So I started, we touched on water rates, I think, in the last one or two meetings that we've had. This briefly has actually been part of an agenda item. We discussed our financing, projects for financing that's going to be coming up in the very near future, things that will come up within the next two or three years, things that is going to come up within the next four to five, just different items in the financing. We've also discussed Oklahoma City water rates and how those are, I'm going to change the sizing of this just a little bit here, so everybody can see all of them maybe. I'll scroll down on that, okay. And what those rates are going to be over the next few years. We are on, of course, we're on an agreement with take or pay from Oklahoma City. Their rates online in the Oklahoma City ordinances are good through 2028. November 2028, right now, is the last rate increase that they have in ordinance. However, the last rate increase that they had in the previous ordinance was this year and it actually jumped twice within the last year. Our last rate increase just occurred November 1st with Oklahoma City. So if we look at the, if we look at their rates, this is where we've been 2022 and this, I'm just looking at the total, the total rate that we have to pay. One is a reservation rate, one is a commodity rate. The reservation we pay whether we use or not, okay? So it doesn't matter and right now we are taking, our reservation rate is 2,48,000 gallons a day, right now. Now, if we ever go over that at any point in time throughout the year, then naturally that's going to raise our reservation for the next year, starting, it was in January, now they have started these rates in November. So the rate, you see the rate right here in the yellow that I've highlighted, that's where we, what our rate increased to, November 1st, that rate will go all the way through October of '26. And then November 1st, we'll get another rate increase and so on. So right now, we're at $3.28 per thousand, $3.28 per thousand. If you look at all costs, if we did go over and we hit all of these costs, the excess rate up to 20%, the excess rate greater than 20% above reservation, that's these two numbers. If we go greater than 20% above our reservation, that 2291 right now is what we would pay. I mean, it's all broken out until we hit the reservation, then 20, up to 20% and then greater than 20%. So you can see where the bill would get extremely expensive really quick. And then if you look down here to the bottom, that is what we pay for the two meters that we have from Oklahoma City each month, 21,000 a month. If you look on out to the right here, November of '28, that rate is going up 70 cents to $3.98 per thousand gallons. And then of course, if we did bust our reservation rate, it would go up to 26.53. And down here, you'll see the, basically, they call these the base charges for Oklahoma City. So from 21011, it will go up to 21329. Why they have it set up this way? We just had all these huge increases here on the meter fees, the base rate, but the next three years, they don't increase but by one and a half percent out to the end.
Can I ask a question? So you said that on the ordinance, they're set till 2028. They're set, but there's still increase in what they set. Is it like, it's increasing, they're set, this is how it's just going to be, but it's not like one rate? They have planned increases in?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it will increase every November 1st.
Got it, to the level shown there.
Yes.
So at first I thought, oh, good, it's not going to move till '28.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's moving, but we just know how much already.
Right. Yeah, it's in their ordinance, you can go online and see their ordinance.
Okay.
So if we come down here, this is where it gets really interesting. So in September of '25, this was our water bill from Oklahoma City, $233,934, okay? That was at the old rates, October 31st. If we used, and here's our usage over here to the left for that bill. If we had the exact same usage for the October bill at the new rates, it would go into effect with the new rates, that bill would jump up roughly $21,000, okay? If you look out here to 2028, when those rates are maxed until they raise them again, which they will, that bill goes up by about $50,000 from current. So the impact just from Oklahoma City water is putting a major strain on Newcastle's budget, basically. And so our rates were set in October of 2023 by the study that was done with NewGen. The base rate is $34 for the first 2,000 gallons, 5.8 cents meter. We left that alone, that's what it was before. We left it alone, it didn't do anything. From 2,001 gallons up to 5,000 is 5.65 per thousand. We left that rate alone as well, we didn't touch it. And then there were two more rates that were put in place, 5,001 gallons up to, I believe it was 15,000, 6.65 per thousand. Anything over 15,000 gallons a month is 7.65. Excuse me. So that's where our rates are currently sitting. Take a look at our expenses, revenues and expenses real quick, and this is just this year. And keep those rates in mind where we're at. Our revenues, June 25th, and this all coincides with the, I believe it's with the Oklahoma City bill, somewhere in there close, these bills are included in the expenses. I got these rates from the water clerk, had her send these to me, or not the rates, I'm sorry, the revenues and expenses. So in that month, June 25 to 7.24, we had 415,000 revenue, 446,000, roughly seven, and with a difference of $31,624, basically in the hole. That Oklahoma City bill was 40% of the expenses for that month. Next month, and you can see the numbers going across, next month, it was 49% Oklahoma City bill was, 44% and 43%. This is kind of an anomaly right here as far as revenues. When I spoke with the water clerk on this, she wasn't real sure why it went up that high. We think it was probably because there were some bills that weren't collected from the prior month and they rolled into this next month. And that happens, that does happen, as I'll show you here in just a second. So that was the revenues and expenses in those months. If you look year for year, '21, '22, we had a total revenue amount, not just water sales, but total revenue, everything that's in MPWA, $10,411,000, $10,411,000. Our expenses for that year was $10,301, so we were roughly $110,000 to the good. $110,000 doesn't do a whole lot, okay, for the water department. '22, '23, we came up a little bit, '23, '24, we finished with a $753,000 deficit, basically, from revenue to expenses. Go ahead.
And because that was what we set rates probably going in, that didn't be reflected until the next year.
That's correct. That's correct.
We were big in the hole before we
Right.
made a rate adjustment.
October '23, yep, that's when they went into effect.
Oh, I see what you're saying. There was a gap of time between when they went up on us before we went up on our side.
We consciously chose, we were trying to use the impact, right?
We got the rate study at that point in time and then we addressed based on the rate study.
Right. I think we received the rate study in August, we enacted the rates in October.
Yeah.
To help make up for that huge loss we were getting.
'24, '25, around 910,000. However, this is when we started receiving some monies coming into us. Jean, you remind me again on this one?
These are, unfortunately, the draws are kind of included.
The draws were included.
Was it?
Right. Which it was basically, it should have been a wash, a draw and an expense. So we did okay with that 910,000. And this is where we're at now, currently, for July through August. Right now, we're 985,000 in the hole, okay? And again, these are some expenses that, did you have something to say? Oh, okay. These are some expenses that are associated with the loans and things of that nature that we're dealing with. Councilman Fullerton had asked me here a couple of weeks ago and I had told him on text I'd be doing this tonight in this meeting. He asked me basically, how many customers do we have that are using 2,000 gallons or less, okay? So this is what, this is what we have on record, April through September. You can see the numbers here, the number of customers that are 2,000 gallons or less per month in these different months, okay? Sometimes they're a little bit more, sometimes they're a little bit less. That's the number of total residents billed. So you can see where we don't have, I'll show you this one, I believe it is, here's the total number of customers that we actually have, 5487. But if you look at this one, it varies from month to month on how we collect those bills, how collections are actually made. And some residents, they don't, you know, they may be late on the bill for whatever reason, so it's not going to show up exactly the same every month.
So that's in 10%, a little less, about 8% are under 2,000?
Correct.
So there it is, right there, percentage.
Yeah, these are percentages. It's an average of about five and a half to 6% or less than 2,000 gallons.
And the significance of that question is because of that rate?
Well, because we wanted to be least impacted or impactful to those moderate income, low water users. So when we did our last rate adjustment after the rate study, we did not increase our base rate.
Right.
Because we wanted, the moderate users, we didn't want to increase their bill any. We wanted to really put the burden on the highest users pay out, the higher amount.
So then the question was how many are actually are there and that's what you're providing now?
Right. Right. And did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did.
Are you surprised with that? I mean, I don't want to get too far.
No, I'm not. I figured it'd actually be a little bit higher.
Okay.
But I understand it being where it is.
Okay, thank you.
So we go over to September billing.
Back up.
Oh, you need to go back to this?
Just a second. So right there, we have, I guess I'm less than...
This is sewer.
Right, but over there, less than, so we had 307 in September, less than 2,000. Is that correct? Your bottom one?
Yes.
Okay, and then click on the next tab, September billing. And so then on that one, we show 1,464, less than 2,000 for September.
Is, hmm, yeah, I see that.
So that's, I guess, what's, that we need.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So we had significantly, that one of those numbers is not right. I would bet that September number is probably closer, like Mike said, I think, I would anticipate we had a much higher number of our user studies, less than 2,000 gallons.
We may be.
And that's correct. So it's a much higher percentage than what was reflected in that prior tab.
I would have to check on this and see how she arrived with that number.
Is the total still the same there? The totals are pretty close to the same.
It looks like it totals, right?
Yeah.
So which other number will play out? Okay, that matter of...
So you don't know where it comes from.
The distribution is different.
Yes.
So basically, we billed for, for that September billing, which is the same as the Oklahoma City billing here, we billed for 444,550. Then we've got the wholesale and the hydrant, the wholesale is Tuttle and McLean County Rural Water District Number Nine, and then hydrant meters, basically is what that is. So the total billing was 484,000, we only collected 338,079 for that same period. Because again, some people just, well, and you can see right here, the amount adjustment on this, and then some of the bills are offset too. They're not, they're not always the tenth, everybody's not on the exact same billing day. Three to four different billing days, Jean, do you recall that correctly?
It varies, but I...
Yeah, there's three or four different billing cycles that we, and I can't remember if they're not cycles, but when payments are due.
Yeah.
Yes. So outstanding on the billing was 142,900, basically. So you see the difference right here between what the Oklahoma City bill was and what our bills added up to, 250,000. However, we only collected 338 in that month, so it was 104 difference, $104,000 difference. And then this is kind of a breakdown, as the mayor pointed out, that, I'm not real sure on that number. All of these numbers came from her billing. So anyway, these, this is how it's broke down, so I would still say, the point that I was looking for is where does the majority of users fall into the gallons used?
And may I ask, inside that question was, how much does the most at-risk homes, what are they averaging? Is there such a, is there such a way to define that? In other words, we're kind of caring for maybe elderly, single, something like that. So my question is, I wonder how many we have under 1,000?
I would answer, say not any, real honest to say. I wouldn't think we wouldn't have any under 1,000 gallons.
Okay, all right. So there's quite a few people in that 2,000 though then, if that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, the top three are pretty close, I mean, figuratively, I mean, if you look at, not figuratively, you know what I mean, like, they're not too far off of each other.
Right.
I mean, obviously, the biggest, that top one.
Then again, you could, excuse me for interrupting.
No, you're good.
You could add graduations to that too, maybe, maybe instead of from 2 to 5,000, 2 to 3,000 or something, I don't know. We're trying to avoid the impact to the lowest with, and yet, yeah, right now, that's...
Well, is your breakdown, is your breakdown because you've chosen those numbers or is it because there's a price rate, a price change at those gallon quantities?
There's currently a price change on those quantities, it's a different rate.
So that's why I was thinking so.
And Kevin is going to propose a little bit different change to that. And Kevin is going to propose a little bit different change to that.
Yeah, so this, so this rate right here?
No, you, you can.
This rate that you're looking at, these rates, this is six sixty-five, or I'm sorry, yeah, six sixty-five per thousand gallons. The, the current rate, I'm sorry, five sixty-five, six sixty-five, and that bottom one is seven sixty-five. That's where we're currently at, okay, and I'm going to show some rates here in a minute for council consideration of, of what we might look at to, uh, to raise these up just a little bit. So here's our breakdown, again, the five eight cents meter, that's your base rate, thirty-four dollars, that includes the first two thousand gallons of water. This is our current meter rates, base rate as you go up in size on the meters. I'm not, I'm not going to propose any changes whatsoever to the meters, uh, we would keep those exactly the same. And then this is our current rates, as we've already said, okay?
To the, to the meters or the beginning flat charge, the base charge?
To the usage charge.
Usage, this is all, this is all base charge.
Right.
These right here, which what New Gen called these was volumetric rates.
Okay.
So residential and commercial, basically, if you look at Oklahoma City, they went, we received an increase of fifty cents per thousand gallons with these last, last two rate increases. We received one in January of twenty-five, we just received one November first. And between those two, we went up fifty cents in our cost to Oklahoma City.
Do they, like, why are they jumping, like, twice in a year?
Rate study.
They're doing them that often?
They, every five years.
Oh, oh, they were, it's a progressive rate change?
Cost of damage.
Okay.
Cost of damage.
Yeah, I was thinking, like, they came back and did again, no, it was a progressive rate change?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and they're building a new pipeline to Sardis Lake that's going to cost a billion or two, so that will be reflected in those rates in the future.
Yeah, and these, these rates that we're receiving from Oklahoma City, it's, we're no, we're not in the minority. Everybody that's getting water from Oklahoma City is facing the exact same thing.
Alright.
And if they're not getting water from Oklahoma City, they have their own costs.
That's right.
And increases, so.
Which I have, and which I passed out, and we'll go over that here in just a second as well, but I passed out some things from different cities that I pulled off their website and their water rates.
Yeah, I know, it's definitely does.
And Kevin, how much, since we last adjusted our rates, how much has our per thousand rate increased from Oklahoma City?
Uh, so if we go back here, twenty-three is when we did ours, so if you look here at two sixty-seven to three twenty-eight, uh, what is that?
Thirty-three and twenty-eight, wherever that is, sixty-one?
Uh, sixty-one cent, yes, sixty-one cents.
Sixty-one, so the rates we're charged from Oklahoma City, hundred and sixty-one cents per thousand, since we did our rate adjustment. And so we're slowly but surely falling behind in, you know, because we have not passed those rates along to our end users.
And to play, I don't know, devil's advocate or random person commenting online, Oklahoma City is not making profits off of this. It's, it's a utility, it's meant to be a pass-through, not, I mean, do we see information like that? Like, are they in the, are they in the red, are they in the black a lot? Because I can just see somebody asking that, well, we're paying Oklahoma City, they're making a bunch of money. Well, it's not the kind of business you're making money off of, it's kind of business where you're just trying to break even.
So that's why they have their rate studies on a regular basis, that that documents the rates that they're charging us.
And why they're charging us, okay, that's, that's the answer I was looking for, okay.
They have all the documentation they need.
Yeah, that's why, and I, I figured, I just wanted to hear that out loud.
So, so in twenty, most likely in twenty twenty-seven, because our rate study that we had done with New Gen is basically, will expire, if you want to call it that, in twenty twenty-eight. So, so sometime in twenty twenty-seven, I will come back to council with a proposal for another rate study. It needs to be done every five years, uh, to see where we're at on all of our different costs that have went up in projects and just everything that went into that first rate study, it needs to be looked at again. However, I don't think waiting on rate adjustments until twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight is very prudent at this point. So going back to Newcastle rates, here, here is, right now, right now, we build residential and commercial the exact same rate per thousand gallons, whether it's, you know, one of the, it's one of the first three, two thousand one to five thousand, five thousand one to fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand plus. The rates that we have right now, five sixty-five, six sixty-five, seven sixty-five, is all the same, whether it's residential or commercial. So basically, this is adding that fifty cents that has, that our cost has increased over the last, uh, well, just since January of this year.
Doesn't recover the full sixty-one cents.
Does not recover the full sixty-one, just the fifty. And that rate then goes up to six fifteen, seven fifteen, and eight fifteen per thousand. my suggestion would be, and regardless of what proposal, and I have four different ones that I'll pull up here in just a minute, but my suggestion would be adding a fourth volumetric rate. Because if we have the majority, this is just my thoughts on this, if we have the majority of people that are falling into these two categories, well, then why, why does a person only using two thousand one gallons pay the same rate the person that's using fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine? So creating that fourth rate would hit ten thousand one to fifteen thousand and go to eight fifteen, and then your fifteen thousand plus would go to nine fifteen. So those real high-end users that are getting up their ten thousand gallons, fifteen thousand gallons plus, they would have to pay the, more of the share. However, if you look at that, also, when you talk about fifteen thousand gallons plus, there's only five hundred eighty-nine.
Can we, can we ask what type of businesses, I'm going to assume it's businesses, that's going to use those kind of volumes?
Car washes. People watering their yards, too. Five hundred eighty-nine, there's about five hundred eighty-nine businesses.
Small business, restaurants, convenience stores, they wouldn't be, they're not going to be that high probably.
Not, not a whole lot, they won't use a whole lot, but your car washes, all the car washes here in town, uh, that's using water, that's, we do have one resident in town that, that, uh, uh, usually somewhere around ten thousand dollar water bill per month.
But that's not five hundred customers, so we have quite a few customers hitting that far.
Right, and, and it's a lot of irrigation, like the mayor said.
And now, in, in any of these proposals, or each of these proposals, it, it does not impact at all those two thousand gallon or less users. Their, their, their rates would stay at the base.
Thirty-four bucks.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering, what you were saying earlier, so that, that threshold, that bond threshold, you're saying stays the same, it's just the usage over two thousand that works.
Volumetric, that's correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought you meant, but, okay.
So tho- those, that's the, uh.
Well, I mean, then that puts it in control of the consumer. If you don't want to hit a threshold, then you learn how to wash it and stay below the threshold.
Right.
What, I, and I can't remember, I should know this because I do pay a water bill, but can we see live of how much we've used at a certain period of time in the month on our, when we log in?
Yes, you're supposed to be able to, at any time.
I thought so, I can't remember, okay.
Interestingly enough, there's still people with their irrigation system going right now with water running in the street.
Right, right, yeah, I know, we know this at my house.
So if you look at the.
You give a question, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I do, unless you want to come back to it, if you're.
No, go right ahead.
Can you help me with the stuff, the information you provided? City of Moore, am I reading this right, the first ten thousand gallons was five oh two per thousand? Is that their first charge?
Yes, and I, and I'm going to get to that here in just a second.
I'll wait, okay, yeah.
Because there's some other things I want to talk about with these other cities, too. Uh, and I, and I'll try to make this as quick as I can. So again, they proposed, these are the different rates, I broke, I broke out the, the four proposals that, that I want to present here for council to consider. Uh, this is the first one that we just talked about, six fifteen, okay, resi, and then there's also a residential only and a commercial only, okay? So in the past, and this is what I've been told, I, I don't know. I was told in the past, uh, when the water clerk first came to Newcastle to go work, twenty, twenty to twenty-five years ago, she's been here a long time, that residence and commercial were paid differently, there was two different sets of rates for residential and for commercial, okay? Which is a piece of what I pulled up here from these different cities, the reason I pulled them up. So, and the, and the commercial, and I looked on Oklahoma Cities, I looked on these here, now, there's, there's only, the one difference that you look at on, from these cities here for the commercial is that somehow or another, they've based their, their volumetric rate on the average winter months' usage, which is according to most of these cities that I looked at, is December, January, February. Now, we can research that more if council wants to go that direction, I mean, that's, that's perfectly fine. I think it, to me, it just makes more, I don't know why, you don't just bill the rate annually, year-round. Uh, I'm, I'm sure they have reasons behind that. But if, if we do residential only and commercial separately, with the, with the four rates, you still get the same thing here I was talking about, but then you look at the commercial, and it basically goes up a dollar per thousand per the volumetric rate on the commercial side. Now, this is on that fifty cent increase, okay? This is what we would start in January of twenty twenty-six, if council chooses to do so. However, when you go to twenty twenty-seven, January of twenty-seven, in November of twenty-six, we get another twenty-five cent increase from Oklahoma City. So then we start with these rates here, Jan- January of twenty-six, and then in January of twenty-seven, after that November one Oklahoma City increase, those rates we start with would increase to these. And it depends on whether or not you do residential, commercial all the same, or you do them separately.
Why would we not do the increase when it starts? Or just try not only do it once in twelve months?
Well, our increase for this year's already passed. So if we, if we do this now, we'll go ahead and start it in January, and then ours will have to stay, unless we did two increases in a year, and I don't like that.
No, I don't either, I, I just make sure that's why you're doing it, just to, I mean, it's not going to be that much money, but.
Yeah, no.
It's just a couple of months, but it's easier to swallow, like, that you're doing only once a year, not twice in one year.
So we're, we're, we're going to get a twenty-five cent increase this month for Oklahoma City?
No, November twenty-sixth.
Oh, November twenty-sixth, yeah.
Yeah. No.
Basically, oh, November of twenty-sixth.
Yeah, the January-November increase of twenty-five is this right here, the fifty cents.
You know, and we, we do have an option, should we choose to, now, and with the rate study being just a couple of years away, it may not be something we want to do, but we could also make an ordinance that we did a mirror increase to our rates based on the November rate increase Oklahoma City charged us. That's an option as well, so that it wouldn't be something we had to look at every year, we would just be automatically increasing to cover the cost of the water we're buying.
Well, I don't see that we would accidentally be making a profit and should stop and look at it every time, we're definitely not making any profits. I mean, a pass-through is just a pass-through.
It's a pass-through.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that doesn't give me any hard fun.
Well, and we're not, you know, and it's not that we would be looking at a profit anyway. But we got to be able to keep up with our, what we need to get done.
Right.
And this year, this current budget year, we budgeted a six hundred thousand dollar deficit in MPWA. That cannot continue, uh, I mean, eventually, it's just going to be unsustainable if we don't try to keep up with it somehow. So in the, in the out years, January of twenty-eight, it goes up another twenty-one cents from Oklahoma City in November of twenty-seven. So these rates would go up, of course, to these. And then in November of twenty-eight, their last, uh, column on their ordinance for increase, until they actually do a rate study, which I'm assuming they will in twenty-seven, uh, we will go up twenty-four cents on that one. So we, we've got a total here, we go up fifty cents now, I think the total was twenty-five, eighty-one cents more, twenty-five, forty-six, uh, seventy cents, I'm sorry, seventy cents over the next three years, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Oklahoma City will go up another seventy cents on top of this fifty that we're doing now. So a buck twenty, dollar twenty. Uh, we, we just, we have to be able to keep up, it's, it's just not sustainable. And with those rates that Oklahoma City is going to be charging us in twenty twenty-eight, uh, you saw what the, the monthly bill was, three hundred and, I think it was three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
It's what it would, with that same kind of usage that we have, three hundred and four thousand. But looking at, so when we budget every year in March, we start doing our, our budgeting for the next fiscal year. We look at the usage we've had, and we project what we're going to finish out with for the fiscal year, and try to budget those costs in there for Oklahoma City, well, if we're looking at the twenty twenty-eight rates, we're going to have to budget over three million dollars for water from Oklahoma City for that year. And right now, we have been budgeting two million, I think this year was two point two or two point four. So it's going to go up another five or six hundred thousand dollars in three years.
Kevin and Mayor. It's on the same usage.
No, that, that, that's on the same reservation rate. Now, if that reservation rate goes up, the amount of gallons that we're pulling in right now, if that goes up, then that cost has to go up.
If we wanted to mayor, if we, if we get to that point, we wanted to mayor or pass, pass along proportionally what Oklahoma City raises, we, we could still do our own steps or our own house distributed, or, or would we keep our current?
You mean the volumetric rate?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, you can decide that, how are you going to do it?
But, but how, so how would you calculate that? Because, uh, would, would you raise just each step that same percentage, and that would take care of it?
That's correct.
Okay, so one option is to go with a, a different step rate, volume, the different steps, and to make it for the, you know, make, make it, at this point in time, to mayor Oklahoma City. I don't, I don't know why we would not do that, if we, eventually, you got to pay, you got to pay for it some way, right?
And I understand, you know, individuals, the water, everything's going up, and to have the water bill continually go up, it, it, it's not good. However, we can't continue to pay more for water and continually charge less.
Right, we, we were doing that fourteen years ago, when I, when I started on council.
And we got, and we corrected that, and then we've, we've slid backwards, and, and there's so many other needs in the city, we can't continually subsidize water with sales tax.
And I'm afraid if we don't automate it, we're, it's going to slip up on us from time to time. If we had any change of leadership or anything, these things, we're going to get in the hole again, I hate it for our people, but. And then I guess we as a city can always explore any future usage or availability.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're looking at several different options to, now, we're stuck with that two million and forty-eight, forty-nine thousand reservation. So our goal long-term is to be, to see what we can do to expand our production capacity so that we don't increase that reservation amount. Um, and we're looking at lots of different options on that right now, but everything costs money. And, uh, you know, long-term, it would be beneficial, um, because that reservation rate, we have to pay for the water whether we use it or not. And right now, we're not using all the water we're buying from Oklahoma City during the winter months.
Right.
So, you know, we may not be, we may be using one, one point seven gallon, million a day, and we're paying for over two million just from Oklahoma City, so.
Which Val, which Val has, Val's our water plant manager, and he watches that, I get a weekly report, uh, it's water plant report, which I, I put in your pockets, or in the city manager's report. And he watches that Oklahoma City usage like a hawk, lets us know every single week where we're at on that usage. It, it appears to me, he, I know, I know in the past, uh, they would get to a point to where, you know, they would just, just run Oklahoma City all through the winter as hard and fast as they could go. He balances it out on, on operating the plant, which, and it's increased, don't get me wrong, the. the usage has increased, uh, even at our plant through this winter. Or sometimes he's had to fire it up a little bit more than, and, and I'm, I'm assuming potentially it's because we're having these warmer days and whatever, that people are still using water and doing whatever, which is fine. But that does cause us to have to use our plant to try to lower or keep us within that reservation from Oklahoma City. Because if it busts, that's our goal. Do not let, let that reservation rate or gallons bust. If it goes over, we get a huge bill, and then come January one, our reservation amount would change.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I was trying to remember, what's the trigger? If we hit, hit more than it just one time, they'll change it? Like, it only is one month, if we hit over, then we're moving up?
Yes, if there's, if we go over one day, well, as it averages out, if, if, say they had a thirty-day bill, and if that thirty days worth of bills averaged out to two million one hundred thousand gallons a day, well, then we would go up to ninety percent of twenty-one or two point one million. It's ninety percent of whatever that highest bill was in that twelve-month period.
Kevin, you were, you were saying we're paying for water we don't use during the winter?
Mm-hmm. Take or pay.
Yeah.
And so why is he having to watch carefully and what?
Cause there's been more usage this winter, so, I say winter, this late fall, there's been more usage than normal.
Normally, by this time, we're pretty much idling the plant full-time and running off Oklahoma City.
Right.
But we're having to bring it online a little bit. Now, once we get into December, January, February, we probably will have the plant fully idle.
Well, if we're paying, if we're, if, oh, those amounts we're paying for, for water we don't use?
Historically, it's been usually November, December, January, February, into March that we're paying for water we don't use.
But this year, that's not the case.
Well, not yet, but, I mean, it's.
We're trying to make sure.
Like, so there's still people, people running sprinklers, cause they're grass growing and green.
Okay.
We're u- we're using a little bit more Oklahoma City water up till this point right now than we typically do.
Okay.
Which is okay, we just don't wanna go over that reservation amount.
No, no.
Uh, so if you look real quick at the, the handouts, and I meant to have these, I was gonna scan these in and have them put in your packets, and I completely forgot that.
That's fine.
So I pulled the City of Moore, Mustang, Yukon, uh, and Norman on their different rates. Every one of them's different. The one that, that really kinda intrigued me was interesting is Yukon, they actually do a twenty dollar a month Oklahoma City fee.
Uh.
And I thought, wow, that, uh.
What is, I mean, it's six and one half a dozen, the other, I mean, up to two thousand, it's still thirty-five, it's about what ours is.
Well, they also raised the rates here, too.
Right, so their base rate is thirty-four, forty-five, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying, like.
Yeah, so it, it's almost the same, but.
On Yukon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to the two thousand.
It's actually thirty-eight, forty-eight, the new rate took effect in twenty-four.
Oh, I see that up there.
Eighteen, forty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, that includes sewage for them, too?
I'm assuming that's a five-eighths meter, it doesn't show it on their website. Five-eighths or a, or a three-quarter, most likely.
The other thing that catches my eye is, is a sprinkler meter.
I know, I saw that.
The mayor and I talked about this as well. There are some cities that do have irrigation meters.
Yeah.
Uh, residents are required to, to get a, an irrigation meter. However, that's another base charge, that's another meter charge. Uh, so it could get real expensive for our customers if, if that was implemented. That's something I'm not really in favor of.
We do have large users that, that have those already, but it's not that many.
Yeah.
But, but Moore does?
Yeah, and I think Moore does, I think Norman, I know Norman does, the lady had told me about it.
I'm pretty sure they do.
I don't have a nap for that right now, but.
Sprinkler meters a lot, not starting with Comgev. You have sprinkler meters?
But you can also see, like, on the City of Moore there, they do have a separation between residential and commercial on theirs.
Do they have separation because maybe they're getting more toxic, clearly, from the commercial side versus the residential side?
More what?
Toxic.
That would, that would be.
That would be the syrup.
Yeah. But this is, this is just.
I want this water, but I was wondering if that's maybe the reason.
Plus, Moore starts out the first ten thousand gallons, not.
Yeah, that's pretty high.
They have, they have a rate of only five dollars, right?
Yeah.
Are they, but where's Moore's, is Moore's water from Oklahoma City?
You're correct, five dollars, two cents per.
They buy from Oklahoma City a portion of it.
You just have to, you just have to keep in mind, though, with Moore, Norman, Oklahoma City, these big cities, and Yukon, they have a whole lot more people to help pay for this water.
Right, right.
The water services than we do.
Mustang and Yukon buy from Oklahoma City. I don't know what percentage, but they also do.
Okay.
They buy a lot.
City of Norman also has a separation between residential and commercial. Uh, Mustang appears that their water is, it appears residential and commercial are combined on their rates. And then it would appear the same way on Yukon.
It's interesting to have outside, Mustang has water outside city limits, that's interesting.
I'm curious about.
Natural does as well.
They do.
I'd be curious if any change to commercial would have a negative impact on development or the success of our small, of our businesses if we went to a higher rate for them.
I don't, well, I, you know, although these communities have, I don't think that's something I think we need to explore at the current time. Uh, maybe if we get a lot more businesses in, maybe that would be worth looking at, but, uh, I think with our staffing and with our complexity of adding additional things, I think it would be better to, to not address that currently.
I think so, too, and if we get, if we do grow and get the large businesses, we can explore then, and they, they may have their own volume rate enough to help, you know, they've got the affordability. They can do anything to our small businesses without absolutely necessary.
I think you could probably cover that on the meters charges for the different sizes of meter, cause.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah. It probably doesn't move the needle financially with the rural water that we pass through, we charged in McLean County, right, and to Tuttle.
Mm-hmm.
Are those on annual contracts with them?
They're on three-year contracts right there, yeah.
And they are, they have take-or-pay for reservations. Do we have the, the option to increase their rate coming soon?
It increases the exact same as Oklahoma City every year.
Pass-through.
It's pass-through.
It's, it's the Oklahoma City rate plus a wheeling fee, and so whatever Oklahoma City charges us, it, it automatically increases.
So right now.
We don't lose any money on that pass-through. No. And, and we, you know, we've provided water to these other communities for a long time and, and, but it got to the point, it was starting to impact our reservation by only providing them water for the period of time in the year they really needed it, summertime primarily. So, uh, a couple of years ago, we, we got together with all the communities, we said, we'll, we'll continue to provide you water only if we mirror the contract we have with Oklahoma City. You have a reservation with us and you pay for it whether you use it or not, so that Newcastle isn't on the hook for you buying water from us during the summer and increasing our reservation. But, and so what we did is we said, we'll give you three years, a three-year contract for you to explore opportunities to find other options to get water. And so you won't be locked into twenty or thirty-year contract with us. If you wanna come back and we wanna discuss that later, we can absolutely do that. However, the way that their needs are increasing, uh, we did tell them also that it's gonna take some investment in infrastructure to their point of connection, uh, if we're gonna continue long-term to, to provide water to any of them. So, there, there's a lot of things we're doing to make sure that providing the water to these other communities doesn't fall back on, on the rate payers, that their citizens in Newcastle could subsidize that, so.
Their, their take-or-pay, though, still falls under our take-or-pay. Like, they don't have their own with the city, even though they're passing through.
They're right, yeah, it's with us.
Which makes it harder to estimate for us. I don't know.
It just, it just ensures that whatever they push on their highest usage month from, from us, um, they have to pay for all year. And ideally, we can keep our plant maximized out and, um, it won't impact us.
Just out of curiosity, sorry, out of curiosity, are, I know through the winter months that we are losing literally, you know, not being able to take that extra gallons from Oklahoma City. Is these others, sub, or other, like, the rural water and, and Tuttle losing out as well? I mean, is it kinda like?
Take or pay agreement, just like Oklahoma City with us.
Right.
So whether they use it or not, they still have to pay for that reservation.
I guess the question is, are they using it or are they losing it?
Well, they're, they're using most of an rural water district.
Yeah.
Cause they're growing, they're expanding, so, so they are, now, Tuttle has their own well.
Tuttle's different, yeah.
So they don't have to rely solely on water from us. They, they can utilize their wells, and when it gets in there, I'm sure they'll be paying for it or they're not taking from us as well.
Well, that's, that was my question, is if, if they're actually doing that.
So they, they were, Tuttle relies more on wells than they do the city water?
Um, that, not in the summer. Well, they still get more from their wells than they get from us in the summer, but they need water from us to be able to provide service to their community in the summer.
I think their reservation is a hundred and eighty thousand a day, if, if I remember correctly what they're setting at right now. And they've been on it now for two years? Year and a half.
Year and a half.
So they're, they're basically ten percent of our water from Oklahoma City with that. Or ten and something, and there's almost two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred and eighty thousand gallons, but pretty sure it's what they're at.
A little less than seventy cents.
I don't know if I ever asked this before, if you said it, I just didn't know it, like, is it a lot of money and not worth our time and money to try to get more wells for this for us?
But there's other things we're exploring.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're exploring different options. The issue is that we have a, we have capacity at our water plant of, we're ready to pass it about two point one million to our clarifiers. We can push that up to about two point eight through our existing wells. We're drilling additional wells out there, we're testing how many more wells we can get. Um, but to do that, we have to increase treatment capacity at the plant. We're also looking at other options for, where we have some old city wells, we're putting treatment there. Um, those are all things that we're looking at, Kevin, developing, uh, plans and pricing.
Right.
Um, with the long-term app, you know, long-term goal of being able to stabilize that reservation with Oklahoma City, and then as we grow in our needs, we supplement that with additional capacity that we bring online.
And we're hoping with, with what we've looked at so far, and it's still very preliminary, there, uh, Myers is looking at the well situation for us, whether or not we can get more. But we're hoping that we could produce with some RO plants, uh, roughly about four more wells total, if we can get it up northwest. We're hoping about four million extra gallons per day, uh, and be able to treat that, like Mayor said, through RO plants or whatever. It couldn't go through our current plant, but, uh, hopefully we can do that. And right now, very, very gross cost of about, I think it was about a million dollars per RO plant.
Which would each RO plant will yield a net of about half a million gallons a day, because we've got back force that'll eat up about thirty-seven percent of that.
Yeah.
And then the other issue with that is the, the well water we have is pretty clinical. It's shallow, it's a luvial deposit, it's South Canadian, but it's very high in chloride, very high in iron, very high in manganese. So once you back force that out of an RO plant, you've got a pretty brining back force that you're dealing with, which we, the likely will not have the ability to discharge that in the South Canadian River. So that, that gets to, what are we gonna do with that? Are we going to have to, and when we looked in the past, the answer was we're gonna have to, uh, put that through a disposal well of some type. So, those are some, those are all considerations we're looking at long-term, what makes the most sense, uh, because it all comes with a cost.
Well, so really, I mean, looking at those options really isn't gonna affect down how much we need from Oklahoma City, it's just gonna offset the growth.
Correct, correct, that's the goal.
Yep.
Because that's, as we can see, whenever we started buying water from Oklahoma City eighteen, nineteen years ago, it was very modestly priced. But as they, they have expanded their system and increased their lines, you know, in, in their jurisdiction, and demand has grown, and they, they're doing the Sardis line and some other things that are big, big costs, their, their water rates continue, have really, really continued to increase, increase at an accelerated rate.
So it'd be a second line from Sardis, there's already a line to Sardis, right?
A line for Tocana.
Okay.
This one for Sardis.
Oh, 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 okay.
So. It's gonna be a, a second, I believe, seventy-two inch line.
Good.
Well, either way, it, it's the people's money and, and if, if we don't, if the water doesn't pay for itself, all other services are paying for water. I mean, we're not, we're not looking to gain anything here, we're just looking to do fair and balance.
Dig out of the hole we're in.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we would be in the hole if we didn't.
We're getting, um.
And like, like Kevin said, you know, this is no push for development at all, but as more users come on system, it spreads their fixed costs out, um, more so across more user, users. And when the rate study is completed, you know, a lot of the, our water rate is based on fixed costs in addition to our volumetric costs. So as we get more users to, to cover the fixed costs, hopefully that will get us to a point with a new water study that maybe we can back off a little bit on increasing our rates. Maybe not, I don't know, but, but that's why we have the water studies from experts.
I mean, that's any utility, cost to serve, is population density. I mean, that's just how it goes. So, that makes sense.
Just my, my thoughts are, if you go to the rates that you're proposing there, Kevin, you know, I like what he's proposed on the, uh, the, the top line, breaking it actually out into the four, adding that additional, um, fifteen thousand plus, um, and not to be punitive, but to, to make those users who are bigger users of the system pay a higher cost for the system. And then, like Jeanne talked, we've talked, you know, potentially, uh, automatically mirroring a increase from Oklahoma City in November, starting the following January, uh, at least until such time as we have a new rate, rate study completed.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's simpler, we already know what it's gonna be.
Kevin, have we done a revenue model based on these rates for year-to-date from this last year to see if we would be profitable or?
I have not, I have not. That's one thing I would like to do, to see where it comes out, how it kinda matches up or stacks up with our current expenses.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe we, we can probably get that done, especially for the next budget. I would wanna be able to see that.
I like the idea, I think Mike even suggested keeping the initial rate where it is for two thousand and under, and I like the. Yeah, we, we haven't touched that. I like the extra added up section as well.
I mean, I think a pass-through is, is, we already know what it's gonna be, it's not an end amount.
No, we know what the rate increase is gonna be right now.
Right, so, there's no reason not to.
And, and we're not talking base rate at all, we're just talking volume.
Just volumetric. No, I mean, I don't want to impact those lowest users, especially if we talk to fixed income and, um.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna impact anybody, this is a very, very difficult topic, and Jeanne and I have talked about this multiple times on these water rates, and it's just, looking at, at our budgeting every single year, this just does not, it would, I mean, what we're doing right now is not going to sustain our.
No, we don't have revenues anywhere else to cover it.
All right, so at this point in time, uh, is there any public comment concerning this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposal for residential, commercial, same-rate increase with the four levels, um, passing through, all the way through the January twenty-eight change. Does that sound right? No? No, just the?
No, and, I mean, unless you, it needs to mirror Oklahoma City.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Beginning November of twenty, I'm sorry, beginning January of twenty-seven, it would mirror Oklahoma City's prior rate increase.
That's why, that's why I just said that, that's why I said it.
Very good, so, I have a motion to have a second, and I'll restate the motion.
Thank you.
Have a second?
I will second.
I have a motion second for approval of the city manager's proposed January twenty-sixth residential and commercial rates using the, the proposed four-tier structure, and also and also to have increases starting in January of 2027 uh, based upon and mirroring the increase from Oklahoma City on our base charge that we receive in November of 2026.
Volumetric.
Volumetric, sorry, volumetric.
You said it exactly like I did.
Yeah, I have a motion second.
Now, do you want to, Mayor, do you want to carry that out though? Until.
Oh, yeah, no.
Oklahoma City does, or until we do a race, then Oklahoma City does a race.
So through 2028?
Yes, November 28.
November 28. Which will be, then it would impact the, the January of 2029 Newcastle, we follow through with that. Got it?
I, yeah.
All right.
Ready.
I have a motion second.
Yes.
Got a question.
Over to you. Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes? Carl Now.
Yes. Item number eight, discussion of possible action on purchase of new 2,025 Caterpillar Model 320 TC hydraulic excavator from Warren Cat, a specified quote number 322992-02 slash source well and approval of financing with First National Bank Trust Company, amount of $257,750.
So as we were discussing, over a couple of us that had already got here, council approved a Komatsu excavator last month, I believe it was. Some things happened, they did not get the, the models in at Komatsu that they were supposed to receive and now that model they have quit making, manufacturing. So we went with the CAT that was next in line and it compares with the 220 model that Komatsu has now, but they are wanting to charge us 265,000 for that piece of equipment. We can get this CAT that is comparable with that 220 Komatsu for 257,750. The rates, I believe the rates from, uh, First National, which I believe is, believe was, was the only uh, institution to submit a rate and financing is 4.09.
4.0, was it 09?
I think it's 4.09.
4.09.
Zero nine.
Yeah.
For 10 years.
For 10 years.
All right.
All right, any questions or? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve agenda item number eight for the Caterpillar as stated on the agenda.
Second, motion second for approval item number eight.
Jean.
Yes, yes, it was.
Yes and yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes? Carl Now.
Yes. Item number nine, discussion of possible action scheduled in Newcastle Public Works Authority Board to profess these regular meeting dates, locations and times, calendar year 2026. Same as we have, uh, pretty much every year, the only date we vary is the second Monday is on, is during the month of October. So I will make a motion to approve the meeting dates as presented.
Second.
Motion second for approval of meeting dates.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes?
Yes.
Carl Now.
Yes. Item number 10, now the treasurer's report.
I'm going to quickly go over October 25's financial report. Um, at this point, this is the fourth month, so this will be 33.3 for an ideal execution rate. The revenues for general fund are sitting at 37.4 and the expenses are sitting at 34.8. So while revenues are running ahead of expected monetary amounts, expenses are where we expect them to be. The capital improvement tax fund, revenues are running at 33.8%. Expenses are sitting at 30%. So revenues are within our expected amounts while expenses are slightly lowered. The revenues for NPWA finished at 37.5%, while expenses finished at 36.5%. Those are running higher than our predicted but expected budget amounts. However, again, as always, that is due to our construction project, project OWE. Uh, the fire department tax fund has brought in $440,000. We have spent $819,000, so that tax fund has covered almost 54% of what it costs us to run that department. For the wastewater treatment plant, we have borrowed a little over $49 million. Our first payment again will be due on March 15th. We have borrowed 2.7 million for the new meters. Um, and by the way, I did just receive our final payout for that wastewater treatment facility, so that should be wrapping up. Sales and use tax came in October for 803,000. 664 of that was sales, 140,000 of that was use. That puts us 1.4% higher than where we're predicted to be at this point this whole year. But October 2025 was 4.2% lower than October of 2024. And the overall receipts at this point were higher last year by 1.3%. Our current indebtedness is now sitting at almost $66 million. Again, that includes the two construction loans. Just a quick rundown of our, oh, before I run down our fund balances, I wanted to mention the finding in that Chris Heim spoke of for the under collateralization. He spoke to me about it and I reached out to Sooner, that has already been rectified and they are, from now on, I get a monthly report from First National to report on our collateralization for all our assets there. So Sooner says he won't really schedule me a monthly report, but I'll start asking him for a monthly report. So hopefully we don't have that happen again. So quickly, state fund balances, our general fund is almost 1.7 million. Capital improvement tax fund is 2.1 million. Uh, 1.1 million, 162,000 of that is the 70%, 998,000 is the 30%. Economic development tax fund is 38,000. Cemetery fund is 49,000. Parks capital improvement fund is 227,000. Admin and technology is 189,000. Rent cost share fund is almost $2.1 million. The transportation impact fee fund is 153,000. Our opioid abatement fund is sitting at 80,000 and the public spaces fund is $2,800. On the NPAWS side of the House, public works authority fund is 2.8 million. Water impact fee is 1.1 million. Wastewater impact fee is also 1.1 million and water wastewater plant fund is 6.4 million. We have invested the, uh, as you guys have requested, that has been invested in CDs. Um, and the MMR fund, which is our meter fund, is 272,000. So are there any questions for me for the month of October?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Item number 11, general managers coming.
Uh, most of my time was actually focused on doing those rates, looking at these rates, but I did have a conversation with ACOG, uh, where, where ACOG is, is going to be the entity that looks and review, looks at, reviews our wasteload allocation study that has been done by S2 Engineering from the new NBR plant that discharged into the North Fork of the Walnut Creek. Uh, so they're, they, they're going to be the ones reviewing that and, uh, uh, have been having some conversations with them to get that rolling and, and I've now got ACOG in touch with our engineer, engineer that's doing that, so hopefully that moves along and it, I mean, it sounds like it's going to be uh, very doable for us to get the wasteload allocation into the North Fork, so. That project just keeps moving along, it's just, it's going to take some time, but then there's a lot to, to do on that end, so. That's all, that's there.
Thank you. Item number 12, any trustee comments? Item number 13 is adjourned.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Second, motion second for adjournment, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Sunday night called on November 10th, 2025, meeting of Newcastle City Council to order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Carl Now?
Here.
Jean Reed?
Here.
Todd DiAmico?
Here.
Mike Fullerton?
Here.
Marcy Wykes?
Item number 2, discussion of possible action on approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion second for approval of the agenda.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes?
Yes.
Carl Now.
Yes. Item number three, citizen comments, this is an opportunity for any citizen to comment in, on any matter related to the city of Newcastle that is not on the agenda. I remind the potential speaker that all speakers sexually may state their name or address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes per person with only one speaking opportunity. Council members will not respond to comments or questions. Mayor may end the comment period at his discretion and prior authorization is required for distribution materials or to approach the council. Any public comment concerning the city of Newcastle for items not on the agenda. Seeing that, item number four, consent agenda. Is there any item any member of council desires to be removed from the consent agenda and addressed individually? Seeing that, item number four, consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion second for approval of the consent agenda.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes?
Yes.
Carl Now.
Yes. Item number five, discussion of possible action on any items removed from the consent agenda, be no action on that agenda item. Item number six, discussion of possible action on recommendation of planning commission. Item number six A, public hearing, discussion of possible action, an application for amendment to 2040 future use map from general commercial to mixed use residential by R&amp;R Land Development LLC for river view villages located in the southwest quarter, section 33, township 10 North range 4 West Indian Reading, McLean County, Oklahoma. Properly addressed Northwest 32nd Street and Riverfront Drive, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This has been continued by the planning commission, I'll make a motion to continue this item to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Aye.
Motion second for continuance.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes?
Yes.
Carl Now.
Yes. Item number six B, public hearing, discussion of possible action on application for rezoning for PUD orders number 894, plan unit development. The PUD plan unit development by R&amp;R Land Development LLC for river view villages located in the southwest quarter, section 33, township 10 North Range 4 West Indian Reading, McLean County, Oklahoma. Properly addressed Northwest 32nd Street and Riverfront Drive, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number R2025-005. This has been continued by planning commission, request of applicant, I'll make a motion to continue this item to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Motion second for continuance.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DiAmico?
Yes.
Marcy Wykes?
Yes.
Carl Now.
Yes. Item number six C, public hearing, discussion of possible action on application for rezoning from IR, restricted light manufacturing and warehousing district to A, general agricultural district, to PUD land unit development, Atton and Atkins Land Development LLC, Lamar's Landing located in the northeast quarter, section 10, township 8 North Range 3 West Indian Reading, McLean County, Oklahoma and adoption of ordinance number 1004. Properly addressed I-19 and South Harvey Road, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number 2025-012.
Good evening, council, Chanae Greenlee with the Newcastle Planning Department. Camille? Yeah, just click off yours. Thank you. This is a rezoning request from IR, restricted light manufacturing and warehousing district and ag, or A, general agriculture district to PUD plan unit development for Lamar's Landing. The owner and developer is Atton and Atkins Land Development LLC and the engineer is Small Arrow and John Boltay is the, uh, PE for this project. This is located, um, um, State Highway 9 and South Harvey Street on the north side of State Highway 9, across from the Riverwind Casino and it encompasses approximately 49.5, 48.59 acres. On the, uh, left-hand side of the screen up here, this is an aerial, gives you kind of the surrounding land uses. Um, the middle screen, the middle is the surrounding zoning. As you can see, it's surrounded by IM1 and light industrial and some ag to the north. The, uh, 2040 Conference of Plans and Future Land Use Map designates this as future, uh, or, excuse me, as general commercial. Um, and you have general commercial to the east and west and mixed use, um, commercial to the north. Some with, uh, some general commercial to the north as well. This, uh, PUD does not require a land use amendment as this PUD is, uh, general commercial land use designation is allowed with the, uh, PUD. And most of the uses that they are proposing within this PUD, um, do fit within the general commercial, uh, land use designation. So just a little bit of background on this, uh, this PUD. So we've been working with this developer for probably about the last two years regarding this piece of property on how they were going to develop this into some commercial, um, parcels. Um, as you know, the Taco Bell and Brahms is located. They are actually these two lots that are not part of this, uh, PUD. They were done through a warranty deed lot split and currently the Taco Bell and Brahms is under construction there. Um, that will be the main entrance into this, uh, development, Kendrick Court. As you can see, I've put up the conceptual site plan here. Um, this is Kendrick Court. We've got, um, three blocks here. Two blocks on the south side of the, uh, detention area, wetland are commercial and then the one block on the north side that abuts, uh, Northeast 40th Street will be industrial uses. Um, there's 18 lots in the commercials, the underlying zoning is CC2, Community Commercial District with the, with the allowance for bars and lounges and auto-related services, but excluding any wreckers, salvage yard. Block three contains two lots, um, and it will have the heavy industrial, uh, district with the allowance for a concrete asphalt batch plant. Utility storage yard, yard and staging areas for portable offices.
So, Janice, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can acclimate it and I couldn't hear, uh, is that Loves right down there in the gray box on bottom?
That's correct. That, this is Loves.
Okay.
And this is Sonic.
All north, okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, so within the PUD, they have outlined specific landscape requirements, masonry and architectural design requirements, exterior lighting, trash dumpster enclosure, parking requirements and cross, this cross-access and shared parking and then sign regulations as well. So as I stated, this area right here is, uh, prime for commercial development. Um, as you know, like I stated, the Brahms and Taco Bell are already underway. Um, I am happy to answer any questions regarding the rezoning for the, in regards to the PUD.
Wow, that was good.
We did not receive any protest regarding this. Planning commission did approve the, uh, recommended the approval with a vote of four to zero. Staff does support and recommend R2025-012.
Questions, comments? All right, is there any public comment concerning this agenda item? Looks like a well, well, what I've developed, as we've discussed, there's significant potential down there. This area will be an area that will be served by the NBR plant, we're, we're in the process of design. Those first two businesses are going on temporary, so, um, that will then connect to the plant when it comes online.
Are you telling me the first two businesses being the Taco Bell?
Taco Bell and the Brahms, yes.
Okay. And we're basically about five years out on the?
About four. If we can, if we can get, um, our permit, wasteload allocation permit completed. We should be about 18 months to two years on design, about the same amount of construction.
Sorry. How's it? On this subdivision portion, how, I know that we were talking about the NBR plant, first, uh, servicing it. But if they start building now, or even in today's, we're not going to be there.
Like I said, they're on temporary systems currently.
Yeah.
And anything that goes in will have to be on temporary system until we can get sewer service there.
Okay.
That, that's the only option.
Yeah.
Services sometime, we're working other options too, but there will be a lift station located right off the southeast corner of the, of the, the PUD diagram there. And we've already made arrangements with that land owner, uh, for 40 by 40 foot tract of land to locate that lift station on that will then serve this entire area down there and.
Push it up the.
Back to the, the NBR plant, back there.
So everything from the hilltop's going to come down to here and then be pushed back?
Yeah, we're going to catch everything from Crystal Lakes will be caught at the hilltop uh, so that we can then idle the existing lagoon system we've got down there.
And do a way that hopefully?
Yes. So lots of opportunity for sales tax-wise.
Absolutely.
Down on this tract.
Well, did we have any investors already looking into this area to be known?
There is a lot of interest. It's just some of the, some of the end users won't be able to locate there or unwilling to locate there until we get permanent solution to the sewer.
Yep.
There will be some other things come there prior to that we'll be able to utilize from temporary, but until we get sewer down there, we won't be able to fully, uh, get the potential of this development.
Right. Now they're expressed, uh, interest in investing in our city, so.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
Get your, a business.
If there's no more comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll look to approve item. Is it six or are we?
Six.
Second?
Motion second for approval of item number sixteen.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Mike Pullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeca?
Yes.
Marcie Wyck?
Yes.
Carl Nell.
Yes. Item sixty, discussion of possible action or adoption of the emergency clause, ordinance number one zero zero four.
Look to approve sixteen.
Second?
Motion second for approval of item number sixteen.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Mike Pullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeca?
Yes.
Marcie Wyck?
Yes.
Carl Nell.
Yes. Item number sixty, discussion of possible action, approval of the preliminary plat of Lamar's Landing.
So this is the preliminary plat that goes with Lamar's Landing of the PUD that you just approved. Again, this is for Atkins Development LLC with Small Arrow Engineering. So there's twenty lots total. Blocks one and two meet the minimum twenty-two thousand square foot so they can have the onsite treatment. Block three meets the hundred and ninety-five thousand square foot minimum lot size. So the drainage is designed so that proposed flows will not exceed the pre-development flows, so they've done their preliminary drainage report. Stormwater detention will be provided with proposed pond in the common area in the wetland, so this whole section in the middle of the, the blue is the detention in the wetland for the entire development. Initial floodplain development permit has been submitted for the overall project, and a floodplain elevation certificate will be required for each building permit. As been discussed, the sanitary sewer is coming to the site. However, all of these lots meet the minimum lot area for ODQ to approve onsite systems. There is a ten-inch water main proposed on the street frontages in the lots for blocks one and two, and there's an existing water main on southeast fortieth street that will serve block three. There is access proposed on the collector streets, Kendrick Court, which is preliminary being constructed now for those two lots that will serve the Brahms and the Taco Bell, and then, as I said, block three will use southeast fortieth street. There is one variance for this request, and it's to use the ADN, ADS-N twelve HDPE pipe for storm sewer instead of the reinforced concrete pipe. The applicant's engineer is here with a brief presentation, and he can touch a little bit more on that. So I'm happy to answer any questions for staff.
Janine, will you remind me where blocks one, two, and three are on that?
This is block one, block two, and three.
Oh, okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions for me, then I will let the applicant make their presentation.
Thank you very much.
You got it right there.
There we go.
Outstanding, we're hot tech tonight, okay. Hi, I'm John Boltay, I'm with Small Arrow Engineering, working with Atkins and Atkins. Here where this is a highly, highly desired location for commercial development, and we've been working with the city for really long, a couple of years to kind of get everything sorted out, and worked through a lot of the details of the site. It does have some challenges involved with getting everything in place. How is this a bad thing, look at that, I did it. So some of this is kind of covering what Janine's already spoke about. Again, we've got it kind of developed in, in three different sections per se. The area where the Taco Bell and the Brahms is going in, that section along Kendrick Court is more of what I call lighter commercial type development, where we've identified potential uses for restaurants, some, some bars and so forth that could go down at the end of the cul-de-sac. As we work our way east along what would be Forty-second Street, then we're looking at probably a hotel site potentially for this, rental store site, potential office space for professional offices, potentially maybe a law office, probably a spot for banker, credit union, those types of things that would kind of be in that Forty-second Street run. Then when we get over to Blair Lane, we kind of transition to more trying to serve the traffic that's already there, so we have quite a bit of truck traffic already coming in and out of Loves. Well, they don't have access to repairs, they don't have access to truck wash, any things that you might find at, you know, some of the larger facilities. So we've targeted that area over there for truck wash, truck repair type facility. I'm from Jocklin, so I brought Chrome Shop with me, Chrome Shop mafia, so there's always somebody that wants those kind of things for their truck. And then we also put a tunnel car wash in there. We've got kind of odd shaped lot there that we ended up with between the pipeline and the Loves, so we, that actually fits quite nicely for a tunnel, for a tunnel car wash. So, so there's kind of a logical transition here of how we want to lay out the land use. Obviously, we want the trucks to come and go on Harvey and use the new traffic signal on Highway nine, and then the folks that come and go into Brahms and Taco Bell will have full access, but I'm sure they'll learn fairly quickly to go around the block and come out through the light, and then that'll, that'll eventually get them out and get them on their way. This is a nice gateway for your community. It's unique that you guys have connection to I thirty-five and the anti forty-four. Nobody else other than the big city can say that. It's kind of cool. Listening to all your discussion about your water rates and your revenue shortages, we're here to try to help solve that issue for you. So obviously, there's quite a bit more potential revenue for everybody. The area in the back is kind of really totally separated then, the block three in the back, heavy industrial, really, we're just trying to kind of use it the way the neighbors use it now. You know, there's already a concrete plant back there, there's already, you know, heavy industrial use back there. That seems to make sense for fortieth street. The wetland area will remain, so it's a pretty natural separation of those uses. Makes for a good, makes for a good transition. And we have to kind of work our way around the, the pipeline, Chronicle Phillips pipeline kind of cuts through there from southwest to northeast, so you know, you have to kind of. Excuse me?
Is that the black line?
Northeast.
No, you kind of see the corridor where it's running up through there.
If you ever look at Riverwind Casino, and you know it's setting at an angle, because the east side of Riverwind is the pipeline.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's keep the way, and so the roadway is kind of strategically aligned, the parallel pipeline, and we have the little turn, and we got permission from Chronicle Phillips to have the crossing perpendicular. It also gives us permission to put a water line underneath the pipeline and to put the future sewer main underneath the pipeline, so.
And maybe missing it, what's the, what's the access to the north block? Is there a?
You're going to come around and go up Harvey, your existing roadway, and then come across them for you.
Gotcha.
So basically, the trucks, you're already mixed trucks, your heavier trucks that you see out there now, they're going to follow the same path that they do now.
Thank you.
Yeah. This kind of gets into our, our variance discussion. We've got three main storm sewer systems that we came up with. Basically, there's a storm sewer system that's going to collect water along Kendrick Court and actually direct it to what will be an open channel that would go into the wetland area. We have kind of a center storm sewer system that collects water from the backside of Loves, and then that Forty-second Street and directs it north into the wetland. And then we have a third collection system that has to stay on the east side of that pipeline and collect that water along Blair, and then again, take it up into the wetland space. So what we ran into is, and what this little graphic is showing you is, we're so flat out here and we're so close to being able to make this work, is when we go from a poly pipe to an RCP pipe, our mains end changes just a little bit where the concrete pipe's a little rougher flow inside of it than you have with poly pipe. And so what this is showing us is if we stay with the same sized concrete pipe as we would poly, then it'll tend to surcharge on us and not stay down underneath the road, it'll try to come up out of the inlet on us. So if we stayed with concrete, we'd have to go to actually a larger sized pipe, and then we have trouble with cover and so forth because we just barely have, you know, the grades to make this work. So what we're proposing is not just simply to install HDPE, but we know because of our groundwater levels here, they're fairly shallow, we're going to go ahead and do flowable fill, so we'll actually encase it with like a fly ash type fill, which will keep it in the ground and hold it in the ground so it doesn't float out, and also makes it pretty sturdy because now you've got that material around it when it's encased. So that's kind of what we're asking for, for permission in, in this particular case to do that. We did go ahead and do RCP out front where Brahms and Taco Bell is, we went ahead and, you know, followed the standard there. The upper part of our drainage system wasn't an issue, but as we got further down into it to the north and we got up against the wetland, you know, we're already putting in thirty and thirty-six inch pipes, so it was going to get really tough to go to something bigger with concrete. So that's, that's what that request pertains to. As you know, this is all on the floodplain of the Canadian. We did quite a bit of modeling and work with this, worked with your engineer with WSB, kind of went back and forth on Hecraz study to kind of see what's going on. And in essence, once we've put in our grading plan and ran our sections for the development, once everything's in place, we're showing that our backwater is just a tad over an inch. So core allows you to go, female allows you to have a foot of backwater, you know, which is pretty excessive. We're, we're going to have an inch. So it's pretty minor with the improvements that are proposed, and basically those two pictures are just shown before and after, it's really, you really can't even tell, tell the difference. The key is we're in the floodplain, not in the floodway. So if you go just past us, a little tiny bit further north, you're in the floodway of the river, which means no, you don't do anything there, no felling, no activity. So anyway, so that, that actually, we were able to get that to work out. And then we have, like I said, this kind of a buttland area in there that we had worked with the core, they, we give us, they give us a determination back saying, hey, this is the space you need to preserve and leave alone because it's already set up as a wetland, needs to stay that way. So we're allowed to dredge and pull material out of that space to create the fill material we need for building pads, but the only thing we're doing in there is we're just going to have a small berm at the very east end that basically will allow the water to build up about a foot deep, deeper than it does now, and that'll provide us our detention that we need for the site. So under full development, our small berm builds up about a foot, and then it'll slowly release it and let it continue. And of course, this little waterway is the one then that drains underneath I thirty-five, and it goes about another half a mile before it actually really catches up with the river. Parallels the river for quite a distance there.
So on your detention, it'll allow a temporary rise of a foot and then flow out at, at the existing level?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have a, just a small outlet structure, so if you think of it just like a typical detention basin, where you have your outlet structure, our outlet structure is just a pipe through the berm to let it out slowly.
As you mentioned, it's very flat there, and so this, when it enters this property, it comes right off Bob Moore Farms, and there's been some concern in the past about water backing up on Bob Moore Farms, so just, just as long as you can assure us that that won't be any issue with backing additional water up for any period of time.
It's contained, we've got enough land that it's self-contained within the property.
Very good.
Yeah, we got that to work out. One of the other things we're going to do is, we do want to do some aeration, so we plan to put some aerators in the wetland area so that it becomes aquatic. We will have deeper basins here because of the dredging to get fill material. So again, we just, we don't want it to become a stagnant, you know, basin, we want it to be aquatic and support, you know, the natural habitats that's there. So again, it, it ends up being a water feature per se, because some of the businesses that end up clearing the back, you know, they're going to back up against this wetland area, so we want it to be nice. That's it. So is there anything, I know there's a lot of information here, is there anything I haven't covered that you're wondering about?
I mean, you're probably, you're talking about using this plastic, we had this issue earlier that we didn't allow plastic pipe in the city. I guess the question is, who's going to be responsible for that pipe after time? When, are we going to be responsible for anything at this drainage? Or is the, or is the developer going to be so responsible for anything that collapses later on or has issues?
Either for some sort of warranty period?
Well, are we dedicating utilities to the city of Newcastle? That was storm drainage dedicated to the city of Newcastle?
Well, I was going to say, that typically occurs if it's within the right of way, so, and that's generally what we're going to have in the plat. There are some runs that go along utilitiesments between the lots, and then they work their way back to the wetland, so.
So the majority, majority of the storm sewers in the right of way that'll be dedicated to the city?
Right.
So after the contractor installs this, it'll be our responsibility?
Again, it's backfilled with the flowable fill, so I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's actually, you know, material that can be excavated back out if there's ever an issue.
The street's asphalt or concrete? I didn't.
I think we're looking at asphalt typicals, and then concrete curb and gutter.
So then that flowable fill actually encases the pipe?
Right.
With, like you said, a, a concrete encasement, but then that, from a cost standpoint, isn't the same price as a arched RCP?
Problem is cover. I just don't have cover.
Yeah, we're going to have cover. The last time we talked about this, we have even the foot of cover required that the spec has in the ordinance now.
Well, we're going to have a foot with this system. So this system gets me a foot of cover under the road. That's the whole point.
So you'll meet the city's spec for the minimum cover and encase the plastic pipe?
That's correct. And these are final design items, obviously, that we're going to work out with you guys, so. They're not very long runs of pipe. Like I said, it's a somewhat limited section where this is occurring, but it, it kind of solves our issue with the elevations and the grades, you know, everything's a half percent.
Yeah.
Sloper flower.
I understand the idea.
And so that's the challenge that we're up against, and that was our solution to overcome.
How many linear feet of this are you looking at?
I think one of the longest runs is about five hundred feet. Most of these are in the, we have one run I know where we have to insert a manhole in between in order to break up the length of the run. Most of them are just, you know, a few hundred feet sections. Now, the bigger culverts where the intersection of Kendrick and Forty-second is, those are actually going to be tin horns, so there we have the open ditch.
Would you mind pulling up a map that shows where you're talking about?
Yeah, so the. I don't know, you have a pointer, anyway, right here, that'll be an R, that'll be CMP there, because this is an open ditch, okay? So Kendrick, we were able to just maintain an open ditch and take it through the wetland. So here we just have a traditional corrugated metal pipe culvert. So the poly systems basically pick up here and drain this system this way, and then there's another one over here that drains these systems in the street, goes back in here, and then heads back into the basin. So this is our longest run of storm sewer, this one behind Loves.
So the one that's, it's actually on property, property, since we're in the east?
Yeah, I mean, you have a little bit, like you said, as far as the street part, that's the part that's the city part, and then like you said, this is between the lots, that's between the lots, this one over here is between these lots, but we have, you know, a handful of crossings.
You know, crossings, some of it's drainage structure, manholes or anything?
These inlets, yeah, curb inlets, and it's taking them across the street into the system. So.
Is there a possibility of maybe just using RCP underneath the roadway section and then using the poly out in the field area?
We can look at that. We can look at that.
Would it be possible to use an arched concrete pipe instead of, to try and get you the elevation coverage you need?
We can look at that, we can look at that for the street crossings.
The challenge is, like you said, the elevation of the property is just such that it is, right? No one wants to bring in ten feet of fill, right? That doesn't mathematically work and profitable.
Yeah.
It's not profitable.
We're already bringing in fill to build eighteen lots.
Right, so you could mathematically make it work if you brought in enough fill, but there's a balance between how much you bring in and what you need to do, but the issue becomes.
I got to get it to drain too.
We, we are responsible as a city for that pipe. We, we are responsible as a city for that pipe long-term, and once we're responsible for it, once the property's developed and designed, we're stuck with all those elevations, just like we are in the one-on-sixty-two, right? There's only so much you can do if something was to fail and needed to be replaced. You're committed to this, this pipe. Now, I do like the fact that you encase it, but there are also two different types of pipe. The HDPE is the, is generally referred to as the single wall, and then there's the PP pipe, which is the double wall pipe. So are you proposing a single wall here or the double wall?
This is N-12, corrugated exterior.
Okay, but there are two types of that.
Corrugated exterior or smooth wall interior?
No, there's a...
ADS, N-12. And it's the best hydraulic capacities, because you have the end, you have the point-one-two end factor instead of the point-one-three with concrete. That's the one we're looking at.
Corrugated exterior, smooth interior. And we do have some of that in town, it's been in the ground for a long, long time, that's in our easements that had any issues.
I don't know on the easement, so much is underneath the roads.
It's underneath the road too, it's underneath Twenty Fourth Street.
I know.
Four-lane portion of Twenty Fourth Street. That's the last twenty, twenty-five years. And I have a lot of truck, is there a pipe over there by that truck wash?
Absolutely. A small one though, because if you look at it, you're basically draining this, this west side of the road, you've got a crossing here and here, that too, that's it. And that'll probably be, I'm not sure if those are eighteen's or twenty-four's, they're in that order. Once they get collected together, then that's when that pipe size starts to jump on, jump up on us.
So Kevin, this will all drain under I-35?
Eventually. Eventually, yeah.
So, you know, we faced a lot of problems with that, but is that problem resolved?
No, the drainage study is still ongoing, it has not been completed.
But this developer obviously knows that challenge for them, obviously, so.
And as you mentioned, we should not increase the flow into that drainage wave.
Oh, even, okay.
Yep, the tension should make, detain and, and not increase the flow, but it's, it's a challenge, and we hope that with the drainage study, it'll come up with a solution that will potentially allow us to maybe retain that water on the west side of I-35 and take an alternative route to the, to the river, because ladies now, once it gets under I-35, then it has to meander through a narrow channel another mile to get to the river, which is very susceptible to beverdanning and other issues. How much cover, you'll have a foot of cover and then the road basin, the road on top of that foot of cover?
Yeah, I'm a foot above, I'm a foot to sub, it's basically a subdrain. So you have your typical section, you have your aggregate, and you have your asphalt. So the aggregate, and then you have your foot of cover. So in essence, what's happening is, when you lay the pipe and your concrete encase it with the flowable fill, that flowable fill then kind of is budding up against the bottom of the base, base rock, so you have a...
The flowable fill, then you'll have your, your basin, then you'll have the roadway. And that's per the ADS spec, their installation requirements require that?
Yep.
And if you remember, up on the city, you required two feet of cover for this pipe as a minimum, the way that he's suggesting that.
But that's without flowable fill.
You're correct.
With flowable fill makes it stronger.
It's questionable on that, I know some, some people didn't want to capitalize.
Yeah, they're not making too much of a flowable fill.
I don't know what a truck weighs, I just went to fire station, you know, one of the fire, the biggest fire truck weighs forty-nine thousand pounds of water in it. So we can, you know, you can approve something, but long-term, does it hold up? Like I said, I will just say the eighteen inch pipe that's under East Twenty Fourth Street gets about two hundred full semis of asphalt a day going over it, and it, they're having any issues with it. However, I definitely know what you're saying, and I think the flowable fill is, is a difference maker in this situation, rather than just...
Right. Well, we gotta keep it stuck in the ground, because the water table there is only three or five feet, just a few feet below the surface, but we gotta keep it stuck down or it's gonna float it out.
Explain the flowable fill a little bit.
Yeah, what does that mean?
It's a low-strength concrete, so your concrete typically is, say, three thousand or thirty-five hundred PSI that you get from the plant, and so when we say low-strength, it's in the nine hundred to a thousand PSI range, which still sounds, you know, it's still fairly strong, but it's diggable, so if you, you know, need to excavate, you can actually, you know, dig it out. A lot of folks will add fly ash to the mix, which is a substitute in the mix design, which actually then reduces the overall strength of the concrete, but it provides this characteristic where we say it's flowable, you know, it's flowable, and we can work with it later. That's, that's what that's about. And the intent would be at least six inch minimum, you know, all the way around the pipe to encase it with that all the way around it, so it's basically guys a giant low-strength concrete collar around the thing.
Six inches minimum, except for the top, and there'd be a one-foot cover on the top.
And we use wall engineering, WSB?
WSB to review this.
I see a lot of upside. We, we have done things in the past that have caught, that we, we live, have to live with for a long time, so I think with this, it sounds plausible, the biggest things we've got into when things weren't done the way they were supposed to, to begin with, so if this is, if this is done properly, that'd be the next credible step, which you have to make sure that it will be done.
Well, this is still preliminary flat, right?
Right, these are things, when we get into final flat, obviously, these are things for final design, this storm sewer system and exactly, I mean, based on our initial calculations and our drainage calfs, this is what we're coming up with, so we know we already got an issue, we have all concrete. Similarly, when we go to final flat, we've got work to do with wall engineering, we've gotta work with your engineer on the sanitary sewer system. We've talked about some grades and some pipe sizes, obviously, they need some time to probably design what they're doing, and, you know, we didn't necessarily want to throw something in the ground right now to commit to them, you know, where they're stuck with a grade that they don't particularly like. So that's another, one of the things that'll have to come together is on the, on the sanitary side, it's another coordination item, it's wall.
So the variance here on this section says you're proposing this pipe and to be installed with the flowable fill, but then the variance doesn't say to also be installed per the city's standard. Could we add that to that section of variance to make sure it has the one-foot cover?
Certainly.
You'd be okay with that?
Yeah, send your man Keith this, Keith, can you do that second?
Oh, yeah. This is preliminary, so just to address, like you stated, this is just preliminary, it's not the final flat stage, so when they come in with actually the improvement plans, we'll be able to see the detail of where they're having the storm sewer pipe. And to answer another question, there is a five-year maintenance bond requirement that protects the city for paving and drainage, so your storm sewer and your paving will be under that maintenance for five years.
Will this be the only time we approve this variance?
It'll come back through when they come through with the final flat.
So if we approve it tonight, we still have an opportunity to change our mind if we need to.
They will have to.
Go forward with all their engineering, though. I'd like to see the variance, how do we cover?
Well, he said he'll, we can add that, we can add the, the one-foot.
Yeah, add the one-foot, I'm good with that.
We'll add the one-foot cover added to that variance, so it's, when it comes back for the final flat.
So with your flowable fill, you make the pipe, then you're gonna have a foot or six inches of flowable fill over the top?
Well, six inches minimum, but the main itself is a foot below your surface of the roadway, okay? So probably what will happen is they'll just fill it up to where it's a little bit heavier over the top, and then you'll have your aggregate for your road run on top of that.
Okay, so just so we're clear, so there will be one foot plus the aggregate and then the road, not one foot including the road?
Correct.
So you're probably looking at, if you put a five-inch asphalt and then you put the aggregate underneath there, how much, how much total cover do you anticipate on top of this pipe from the surface of the road to the top of the pipe?
Let's see, where's our typical section at? You have that on this flat here in the corner, that's what I call it. Let's see, we got two, four, eight, so you got six, yeah, it looks like your typical section is at least another six to eight inches of roadway section, right? Your asphalt plus your base thickness?
On top of twelve inches? Twelve inches plus six inches.
Right, right.
Eighteen inches.
Yeah, so you're gonna end up about eighteen inches deep to the actual corrugated pipe itself.
I'd like to just throw out, I'd like to see our engineer, I'd like to see them coordinate on a reinforced concrete arch pipe. Does it really, I mean, also for council, I've heard conflicting stories on the pipe, whether it saves any money or not, so if it doesn't save any money, then you're encasing it with a global fill.
It's a capacity issue, whether or not I go to squash concrete or not, it's capacity.
So doesn't that give you the capacity back with the arch?
Not necessarily.
That only fixes the height?
Yeah, not necessarily, because of the roughness, that's what I'm running into. I know what you're talking about.
Larger arch pipe, that you'd be able to get the height that way, then you'd be able to make your elevations work better, but not maybe the size is what you're saying.
It can't go any taller, so it's width, and so that's, that's where I'm running into trouble with pipe size. It's really causing me a problem. My suggestion is if you can approve the variance with the notion that we'll coordinate with WSB when we get into final design, we'll sharpen our pencil to see what can we do, but preliminarily, what we're finding is we're running into a problem here with, you know, the size and hydraulic capacity, and we're trying to keep the water out of the street and keep it in the system and not have a surcharge on us, we may have a big storm. So, and I'd see it as a final design item that obviously we'll have to take care of for approval at the final flat, but we're just trying to get out in front of it right now by saying, hey, if we can have some sort of leeway here with the poly pipe and the flowable fill, we know it'll work for sure if we do that. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
Any other questions from the applicant's engineer? All right, thanks, sir. Is there any public comment concerning this agenda item? Saying now?
For the minimum cover of eighteen inches?
Yeah, it's twelve now.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments from the council? In this, this instance, I definitely echo the concerns, I know, I've seen plastic pipe and issues where it hasn't worked, but I think that's been a failure of installation. Same like I mentioned earlier, plastic pipe on a very heavily traveled road purpose, and this same pipe is in the grass right-of-way, and there are tractors that go across it on a regular basis that are in excess of forty thousand pounds and have not damaged that, and it's not under a roadway, it's just got their fill on top of it. So I, I would prefer that we rely on our engineer, our consulting engineer, to determine whether it's acceptable and meets engineering requirements. And one foot of cover plus the flowable fill, I, I don't know, but I guess that the engineer would have to tell us whether it's bad.
Yeah, that's how I feel, I mean, I don't put our city at risk, and I don't know the, the level of the risk, we don't want to do something that's catastrophic to us with that many businesses out there, but the problems that we've run into so far is when something wasn't designed to and maintained to the engineer's spec. So I think at some point in time, for me, I have trust the engineer because I, I don't have the additional knowledge, so I, I'm supportive of it, I'm really supportive of the high-end potential of it, but I want it to be done right too, so I respect the expertise of those who have that knowledge. So I don't know where that leaves us, just...
I'm not an engineer, so it's hard for me to... I think he had mentioned he would add the one-foot cover plus the flowable fill to the variance language and...
Does to make, make it sure that one foot...
Then one can always come back and present if that engineering doesn't work, but I think since they've talked about that tonight and agreed to it, we should add that to the variance. Yeah, one, one foot plus the base plus the roadway, not one foot total. Right, plus the flowable fill, which is a, the flowable fill is a great idea.
Can you articulate, can you articulate that?
I'll give it a shot, make a motion to approve item number six E, approving the variance with the specifications, there'd be one foot of flowable fill cover on top of the pipe in addition to the base and the road surface, and that the applicant coordinate with the consulting engineer for the city of Newcastle and meet any requirements they might have for approval. I think that we want to say the flowable fill plus one foot of cover is what we were trying to get to?
Yeah, one foot of cover.
One foot in addition to the flowable fill, one foot of cover.
Well, no, the flowable fill is part of the cover.
Part of the installation, the cover is on top of that, is that what?
No, the, the flowable fill is gonna be six inches around all sides, but there's going to be a foot on the top plus the road base plus the road.
There you said it, okay, yeah, then I follow what you just said, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
How's second?
Motion second for approval, item number six E as amended.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Lynn?
Yes. Item number six F, Public Hearing Discussion of Possible Action on Application for Amendment to the 2040 Future Land Use Map from Suburban Residential District to State Residential District for Matthew Hauser and Angel Hauser, husband and wife located in northwest quarter to northwest quarter and southeast quarter, and the west half of northeast quarter to northwest quarter to southeast quarter, section sixteen, township from nine north, Grand Forewest, Indian Ridge, McLean County, home, property address one-nine-five-zero Northwest Eighth Street, Newcastle, phone, reference, case number R-2025-0140.
I will be presenting these items six F and six G together. The first one is the Newcastle 2040 Future Land Use Amendment from suburban residential to state residential, and the rezoning from E-one, State Residential District to A, General Agriculture District, R-2025-013. On the left side is the aerial showing the lot, this is at the end of Northwest Eighth Street. Within this last year, council has approved on the north side of this same exact thing, they went from E-one to Ag. The reason being, the applicant came to us, and in Ag, in agriculture, you can construct a barn or an accessory building prior to your main dwelling, and that's what the applicant wishes to do, is to utilize this property as Ag. It meets the five-acre minimum law area requirement for general agriculture, they have fifteen, so their hope is to develop and use this land as an Ag property. The surrounding zoning is E-one, and there's also general agriculture to the north and to the south, and the 2040 Conference of Plans Future Land Use Map requires a... requires a land use amendment to estate residential. Staff supports and recommends approval of both the future land use map amendment to estate residential and the rezoning from E1 to general agriculture. We have no protest, and planning commission supported this application and recommended with a vote of four to zero. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Is there any public comment concerning this agenda item? So this is strictly updating the land use map. Zoning is the next item.
That is correct, sir.
So.
I move to approve 6F.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6F.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton, your vote please. Do you have one on 6F?
We're moving to approve that.
The future land use map amendment.
I'm going to say yes.
I mean, you're the man.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6G, Public Hearing Discussion of Possible Action on Application for Res zoning from E1 Suburban Estate Residential to Agriculture for Matthew Hauser and Angel Hauser, husband and wife located in northwest quarter, northwest quarter, southeast quarter, and the west half of northeast quarter, northwest quarter, southeast quarter, Section 16, township of Nine North, range four west Indian Meridian, McLean County, Oklahoma, and adoption orders number 1005. Property address 1950 Northwest 8th Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number R2025-013.
This is the rezoning portion of this item.
Rezoning to Ag.
That is correct.
Yeah. Any contesting or any objections to that?
No, sir.
And this one on 8th Street, right?
This is. It's at the very end. South lot.
Is this the area that got some water stuff figured out?
Yes.
The water is figured out?
It is.
Okay.
All right, that was quite an ordeal.
Oh, yes.
It's good.
All right. Any other discussion?
No.
Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
Make a motion if you are.
Let me get, is there any public comment concerning this agenda item?
I make a motion to approve item 6G.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6G.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6H, Discussion of Possible Action on Adoption of Emergency Clause, orders number 1005.
I move to approve 6H.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6H.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6I, Public Hearing Discussion of Possible Action on Application for Res zoning from E3A Residential Estate District Agriculture to E3 Residential State District for Hidden Haven Homes LLC located in the south half of northeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section 7 Township Eight North, Range 3 West Indian Meridian, McLean County, Oklahoma, and adoption orders number 1006. Property address is 4101 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number R2025-014.
This request is a rezoning from two zoning districts on one lot, general agriculture and E3 Residential Estates District for R2025-014 for Hidden Haven Homes at 4101 South Penn. It's a one-acre lot. So just a little background of what happened. Several years ago, the property owner, as you can see right here in the middle, this property owner decided to rezone a portion of his property to E3. They rezoned the property to E3 based on a legal description. Several years later, approximately about five to six years later, they went in and did a survey, and they surveyed additional approximately 15 feet on the rear of the property that was actually zoned Ag. So you ended up with a dual-zoned lot. The applicant with Hidden Haven Homes contacted us about a building permit. We discovered this, and this is just to get the zoning into conformity so they can receive a building permit and don't have dual zoning on one property. Generally, there's E3 and E2 in the vicinity. Does not require a future land use map amendment. It is suburban residential, and there's all large lots, estate type parcels surrounding this area. Staff does recommend approval for R2025-014. Planning Commission made recommendation with a vote of four to zero. There was no protest for this item.
Public comment concerning this agenda item?
Move to approve 6I or 6I.
6I, yes.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6I.
Who's Todd? Who's second?
Todd saying.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item 6J, Discussion of Possible Action on Adoption of Emergency Clause, orders number 1006.
Move to approve 6J.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6J.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item 6K, Public Hearing Discussion of Possible Action on Application for Res zoning from E3/A Residential State District Agriculture to E3 Residential State District for Hidden Haven Homes LLC located in the south half of northeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section 7 Township Eight North, Range 3 West Indian Meridian, McLean County, Oklahoma, adoption orders number 1007. Property address is 4050 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number R2025-015.
I can go through the same spiel that I just gave you.
Right next door.
It's the lot right north.
And someday we'll be hearing from the neighbor to the south.
That's right.
Any discussion?
Any public comment concerning this agenda item?
I make a motion to approve 6K.
Motion second for approval item number 6K.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6L, Discussion of Possible Action on Adoption of Emergency Clause, orders number 1007.
I move to approve 6L. Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6L.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6N, Public Hearing Discussion of Possible Action on Application for Res zoning for IR Restricted Light Manufacturing Warehouse District to IH2 Heavy Industrial District for De'own Properties LLC, Derry Owens, located at lots 14, 15, 16 of Section 2, Township Eight North, Range 3 West Indian Meridian, and the west half of Section 2, Township Eight North, Range 3 West Indian Meridian, McLean County, Oklahoma, and adoption orders number 1008. Property address 3976 South Harvey Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number R2025-016.
This request is a rezoning from IR Restricted Light Manufacturing Warehouse District to IH2 Heavy Industry District for De'own Properties LLC for approximately 245 acres located at 3976 South Harvey. Just a little bit of background, the applicant came forward to us for a building permit to do heavy manufacturing for reinforced concrete pipe and different types of concrete stormwater and sewer pipes. We discovered in light industrial, you cannot have heavy manufacturing, and you can have no outside storage of goods. So we directed them to rezon. You know, in this area, there's lots of heavy industrial uses and light industrial uses, concrete batch plants. So staff does recommend approval for this rezoning to IH2. Planning Commission made a recommendation of four to zero, and there was no protest for this.
So that's way up by the river?
Yeah, it comes out even with 40th Street on the southern edge of it. But yeah, pretty much, if you drive by 35, you can see where they've kind of cleared it out and cleaned it up. But is there a public comment concerning this agenda item? Very consistent with what's going on there now. There's producing maybe some concrete pipe down there right next to the water.
I know, that's what I was thinking.
Have some customers.
Might be cheaper.
Anything, motion?
Make a motion to approve 6M.
I'll second.
Motion second for approval item number 6M.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6N, Discussion of Possible Action on Adoption of Emergency Clause, orders number 1008.
Make a motion to approve 6N.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6N.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6O, Public Hearing Discussion of Possible Action on Approval of Planning Commission Recommendation for Use for Rezon Review for De'own Properties LLC, Derry Owens, for Use of a Precast Concrete Manufacturing Plant located at lots 14, 15, 16, Section 2 Township Eight North, Range 3 West Indian Meridian, and the west half of Section 2 Township Eight North, Range 3 West Indian Meridian, McLean County, Oklahoma, property address 3976 South Harvey Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma, case number UPR 2025-007.
This UPR is a companion application to the one that was just previously approved for a concrete batch plant that will serve only for the manufacturing of the pipe in, at this site. It's for 3.07 acres, and they will have manufacture that concrete on site that they will use to make the pipe on site. So they will have a concrete laydown area. It's approximately, and it's right outside of the floodplain. And they will still have to provide a floodplain permit with this. And Planning Commission made a recommendation of a vote of four to zero, and staff recommends approval of UPR 2025-007. We have no protest in this application.
Make a prologue building there.
It's a good use of their land, building on one day, key tiny corner. Don't waste any, no space behind it.
Any public comment concerning this agenda item?
Ready?
Ready.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 6O.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6O.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 6P, Discussion of Possible Action on Approval of Planning Commission Recommendation for Deviation of FASAD Requirements as described in the Newcastle Code of Orders, Chapter 154.101, Exterability Material and FASAD Requirements in Commercial and Industrial Zoning Districts, A Commercial Zoning Designations 1 for Snow Enterprises LLC located at 3521 Northwest 32nd Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma.
The applicant has came forward to request a deviation of the FASAD requirements in the commercial zoning district. As you know, there's an 80% requirement on all elevations. This is for Snow Enterprises located at 3521 Northwest 32nd. Currently has a building permit in and is looking for a deviation to allow metal architectural panel on the rear elevation only. I will state that the next three applications are very similar. They are all making the same requests, so just a little. So here we got the front elevation meets the 80% requirement of masonry. Both the east and west elevations, the side elevations up there, that meets the 80% masonry requirement. And the rear is going to have the overhead doors and the architectural metal panel. This will not face or be seen from Northwest 32nd Street. The lot behind it is making the same request on item 6R.
And that's at 3523?
Mm-hmm.
And that's not street facing though?
No, the front, no, no. This is a private road here that will be their frontage for this lot here.
Where would the back of the buildings be located?
So the back of the building, this will be the back, the rear, rear, rear.
So the front and sides will all meet the minimum 80% requirement.
And this is the same area we just approved, the metal buildings with no permits?
Yes.
Different section?
A little bit, right here, no rest. No rest.
Yeah.
Any public comment concerning this agenda item? I have no issue with the location, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to, being impactful there. If I'm ready, I'll make a motion to approve item 6P.
I'll second.
Motion second for approval item number 6P.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6Q, Discussion of Possible Action on Approval of Planning Commission Recommendation for Deviation of FASAD Requirements as described in the Newcastle Code of Orders, Chapter 154.101, Exterability Material and FASAD Requirements in Commercial and Industrial Zoning Districts, A Commercial Zoning Designations 1 for Snow Enterprises LLC located at 3473 Northwest 32nd Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma.
I can do my spiel again.
We'll bypass public comments on this one as well.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6Q.
Second.
Motion second for approval item number 6Q.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes. Item number 6R, Discussion of Possible Action on Approval of Planning Commission Recommendation for Deviation of FASAD Requirements as described in the Newcastle Code of Orders, Chapter 154.101, Exterability Material and FASAD Requirements in Commercial and Industrial Zoning Districts, A Commercial Zoning Designations 1 for Rivers Edge Group LLC located at 3523 Northwest 32nd Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is the one, just to these, so it's surrounded by either the storage or these other two buildings.
Correct.
No, I was just.
Make a motion to approve item 6R.
I'll second. We're on a roll here.
Item number 6R.
Jean Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd DeMeco?
Yes.
Marcy White?
Yes.
Carl Nell?
Yes.
We're running out of alphabet.
I know.
We didn't make the disease this time, maybe try the harder next time.
Oh, yeah, I'll try, for sure.
All right, item number seven, and that's just to get to item number seven. Discussion of Possible Action on Redirecting Staff with Advice of the City Attorney After Amendment to City Laws relating to plumbing crews. And before we take that up, I'm going to probably a five-minute recess. So we've been here a minute.
I'm a trash.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
A 2015 grant.
Potentially direct an amendment to the city ordinance relating to swimming pools.
So, when I read the agenda, it's the first time I've seen it. So, I'm going to defer it again.
No, I'm going to defer it to come out, the councilman D'Amico.
Okay. Yeah.
He asked for this, actually, he asked for this.
I did. Thank you. I brought it up just as a discussion. We have several different property types in Newcastle, right, that are anything from a residential small lot to ten, twenty acres, and people want to put a pool in, right? So, I know our ordinance reads that there has to be a fence, and that's a requirement. In a similar city, I think it was Chickasha I provided, it has a, it has an ability for staff that has a section that reads, and I can get to it, that a natural barrier can qualify as a fence. So, it says, "A natural barrier, hedge, pool cover, or other protective device approved by city inspector may be used as long as the degree of protection afforded by the substituted device or structures is not less than the protection afforded by an enclosed gate, latch, and those things," right? So, it gives staff the ability on a property type that, let's say, somebody has ten acres or five acres, and their site's completely wooded, and that's what they've decided to live in, right, to buy and purchase. They build a pool two years after they bought the house. Well, city ordinance, and Janine, help me if I'm wrong, but it requires they have to put a four-foot fence around that pool, which then is, they already have a natural barrier, maybe their entire five acres is wooded. I don't know who has the, the screen, but if somebody in a car, you have a screen, or anybody getting a screen? Or if you want to, you could go to an address I can give you right now, which is a similar situation, 951 Switchgrass Way. Thank you. Try it. Let's see. Scott, help me. Now, just push the button, is it that?
You have to wait just a minute till it turns white. It's all white.
No, it's good.
So, we're waiting for that to come out, the protection. I usually think of that fence to keep maybe neighboring kids or straying over there.
You're right.
And, okay, go ahead.
Those are most insurance companies require.
So, there's another, right, there's a couple of sides to this, right? Just because you give staff the ability to, to maybe forego that requirement, it may not eliminate their insurance requirement to have a fence put around it. But you can see the property on the left is completely wooded, right? That, I think, is a two-acre tract, and the property on the right is similar. I believe the property on the right has a pool now. There is a property here that's not quite the same, right? So, staff would have the ability to make that determination whether it's qualified or not, right? But if you go up to the one here at, right, 951, if you were that homeowner, you probably don't want to put a fence around that pool, right? You want to enjoy that backyard, and you want to enjoy the, the natural barrier you have that was created with that lot. And these are tracts that are not next to, Gene, kind of to your point, they're not next to
Residential.
Twenty other residential lots, right? These are in an area town where there's five-acre tracts and things, and that would obviously have to be up to staff, too, to make that determination.
I like your idea. It sounds very subjective, but the person having to make that decision, but if that could be articulated, I could see its advantages.
It is, you know, it is in this ordinance here, and Chickasha allows, it's one of the items, right? It doesn't also just say that you can't do a fence, it just gives an option. And maybe you want to add language, maybe you don't want to just say the city inspector, maybe you want to say the community development director, maybe you want to add some other staff to that, gives them the ability to, to make that call. As we have several property types similar to that, right? And pool permits that come in with applications if people want to build a pool, and then the requirement right now is to throw a fence up around that when you enjoy the scenery of the lot that you purchased. So, it's just up for discussion. I'm not, it was a discussion item and possible action, but it doesn't have to be action, it's just something I wanted to bring up.
So, if, you know, we decide to pursue that, again, I'm not trying to just be the negative of it, but there'd be a lot of people who say, "No, I don't need a fence." And I don't know how significant that would be. Why do we do it anyway? And I'm sure there's going to be someone that's saying, "This is a natural barrier," so... But, I mean, I agree with that one. We're not there, the last thing you'd have to do is put up a wood or a chain link fence around property in your own backyard like that, so I'm neutral on that part.
But what's the intent of the fence?
Well, that's accidental.
Well, that's what I was thinking, too. I thought, what's the original intent? The original intent is accidental, you know, child, if, if, if we wanted to do it, then I would say it would be maybe more appropriate based on the size of their property, if it was five or ten acres or larger than, than they could maybe know, or something like that, and has a natural barrier. But if it's not, if it's a city lot, and they've got trees all around, it's still really close for a neighbor kid to get to. And I'm guessing, Gene, too, that's maybe the original intent, so if we did anything, I would say it would be if it's a certain size or larger lot, because that's going to put neighbors a lot further away.
This is a two-acre, this is a two-acre example here, that all the lots are similar to that, right, that they just cleared enough to really build a house.
Right.
And drive.
Could you call it, like, anything, zoned agriculture, in a sense?
Well, I put it at five acres, but if we went to our state lot zoning, that would put it at a minimum of 0.62 acres and above on our E3.
Yeah, this is their ordinance, right, in Chickasha that is modified to allow that. And maybe, I mean, maybe Jeff could help with language there, or even staff just help with language if they thought of something that might give them the ability to control that, I don't know.
And you could do E1, E2, an ag, that would put it at a minimum of one-acre lot.
There, that's a good idea.
And still have to have a natural barrier, though?
Sure, it still has to have a natural barrier.
Yeah.
But this, those devices would not do less than the protection of an enclosure, gate, and latch.
And then the last sentence doesn't really make a lot of sense, kind of conflicts the first sentence, doesn't it? I've seen some underbrush doing some surveying that's pretty thick, but, yeah.
I think the first Bueller's running, trying to get back to his house, he jumped through hedges around.
We did jump through hedges, you're right.
So, it's...
So, the Oklahoma Unified Building Code Commission, which is mostly used for rural areas, rural towns, because they don't have their own code system, they allow, or their code calls for two-plus acres
So good.
that they can have just natural barriers or whatever. And I had a talk with Janie about this, and she, inspectors and planning are of the opinion that we need the barrier. But I said, "But what's the difference if it's, if it's a two-acre piece of ground, or it's a five-acre piece of ground, whatever, and that acreage has a pond on it?"
Right.
What's the difference in the drowning potential or the safety aspect? Well, the uniform, whatever here, told, told Janie, she spoke with her, they told her the exact same thing, if there's pond on the property...
So, we're not requiring it for that?
We don't require it for that, nobody requires it for that, and still the potential there for drowning.
That's true, that's a good point.
So, I mean, I wouldn't, Mayor, I would not even consider it for one-acre lots, E1, E2, whatever.
Well, E1's two acres.
Well, so this one here, and they told Janie that it has to be 2.01, it's got to be over two acres, so, I mean, council could make their own decision, of course, on that.
I see that point. This one, I think, are two-acre tracts over here off of Switchgrass, I think, I thought, I don't know, I'd have to go back and know the, I thought they were two-acre lots, so...
Most of, most of, I thought it was five over there.
Maybe that's what.
What neighborhood is Switchgrass?
It's off Southwest 16th and 76th, just to the west.
Yeah.
West of 62.
Private, private road.
I mean, 1076 goes back north.
Maybe they're, maybe they're five.
Yeah, and you can go to 2.0, it says 2.1, and include the acreage.
It's west now, it may even be 10.
I think... Yeah, you might be right, I think they sold half of this tract, so I may be thinking of what they have left.
Yeah.
That's, that's...
Yeah.
But they're, that particular, this example is great, right, because it just fits what I'm talking about. But there's several that would be similar to this example, right? I mean, it's not as wooded as the first one I've shown, it's a larger piece, it's internal, there over off Rockwell, inside of a ton of other tracts that are large tracts. There probably is a pond really close to that somewhere that's not fenced, right?
Okay, the tree. They're not sitting up right next to a neighbor.
Yeah, but does it have a natural barrier in the back? It does, does it have it all the way around like your first example? It doesn't, right? So, I don't know, I just think...
Natural barriers can change.
That, too?
Depending on landowner. I, I don't have a problem with it, two acres or more.
Yeah.
I'm on a two-acre track, I know all my neighbors have fences around theirs, or even a metal fence around it, but they're open, I mean, our land was...
No barrier.
Didn't have trees on it when we bought it, so a lot of people still don't have trees on their land.
Yeah.
Or hedges, and I, I think it's, I don't mind it being up to the homeowner, I don't mind it being up to staff making those choices.
I, I would, I would just assume if, if council chooses to do any kind of change on this, or allow whatever, just do it by ordinance, and don't put that on the back of staff to, to make that determination. Either it's two acres, three acres, whatever.
It needs to be easily defined.
I agree, otherwise, we're going to get things all the time.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's, we need to make it real easy to define.
Using a variance process.
Hmm, that's not a bad idea.
What do you think about?
A variance process, where you give notice to surrounding property owners, part of this is protection, people that might be around you.
That's true.
Nobody shows up and objects, and that gets it off of staff and puts it more as a neighborhood decision.
Yeah.
Good point.
Other than that, the only issue with that would be is it would cause a thirty-day delay in somebody getting their pool permit.
Put away and put the fence up.
I was going to say, they shouldn't mind the delay, they're going to get out, spend in that money.
Yeah, but if it's, if you're on a large acre, if you're on enough room, and you have some neighbor just oppose it for no reason, what are you going to do? You going to prove it anyway?
Well, and then I think what happens is, I think you see people build a pool, they don't get their final permit. I think you probably have a couple instances in town right now where they've not gotten the final permit because they don't want to put a fence up.
Right.
And what's our recourse there? They really don't have any. So, I don't know, if you want to, that's an interesting thought, Kevin, is to just add it to the ordinance, but I don't know if this language was okay, or if we should ask Jeff to come up with language and present it, or...
I think it would be a fairly easy change, in my mind, but...
But I think the language you're proposing is per size, per minimum size, and not...
I think that's a great idea.
And not, you, you have to say, you could say recommended, a barrier, a hedge, or pool cover, but, but fence is not required for 2.0 or above?
That's great. It's trying to fit a certain property type, right?
I'd love you to go get that pool.
I'll tell you what.
It weren't for the money, did it?
If it's Jeff to work on that, and you have enough guidance, you think, to cobble something together, Jeff?
Sure.
All right. Then we'll, we'll address that at, whenever you guys have your word.
All right, now, item number seven, item rate discussion possible action regarding adopting resolution 2025 dash 10, approving the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation Speed Zone modifications for US 62 slash Main Street and State Highway 76.
So, basically, McLean County, or I'm sorry, ODOT is, they're getting, they're getting ready to do some speed changes down through Blanchard, and of course, they're going to be working on 76 just like they are with us. But the way that, I mean, everything on Highway 76 from 37 all the way down into Blanchard, excuse me, is going to be 55 mile an hour. Ours will not, won't change, because they've already set it at 55, but the, the way they're doing the zones and pieces going up, coming into Newcastle, going up 37, changes the way it looks on their maps, or whatever it may be, that's the reason they're asking us to sign this resolution again, because we'd already done a resolution for our 55 mile an hour, but since this includes Blanchard down there, they want us to do it again.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, item number eight, second. Motion for approval, item eight.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Yes. Item number nine, discussion possible action on designation of a primary delegate and an alternate delegate to serve on the 911 ACOG Board of Directors.
Apparently, ACOG does not require for, does not require us to, to appoint new members or anything else, they do not expire. Totally up to council how you want to do this, but it's been three years since, since Thornton and Marcy were nominated and appointed to the, the NPO and 911 boards. Totally, totally up to council how you want to have it.
I think we just roll on.
Say kiss him on the cheek and think.
I would say we could do one person, but it's such different things, that like, I really enjoy the, the 911 part.
And Marcy is on top of her game.
People like blew past a major issue the other day, and I was like, "Excuse me, can we just get rid of this consulting firm? Like, what are we doing?" Well, we wondered why nobody asked, and like, hello, anyways.
You're primary in 911?
Yeah.
I make a motion, approve item number nine, with Marcy Wise being primary political committee. Motion second for approval, item number nine.
Is second?
I did. That, that'll be.
Yes. Okay. Gene Reed?
Yeah. He's got to be good, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Item number 10, discussion possible action on designation of a primary delegate and an alternate delegate to serve on ACOG NPO Policy Committee. This is one you're...
Mike.
I'll make, make a motion for primary as Mike Fullerton and alternate as Marcy Wise.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item number 10.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Yes. Item number 11, discussion possible action on membership on the ACOG Board of Directors and designation of a primary delegate and an alternate delegate to serve on the board.
So, this, I'm going to do it.
Well, this came up when we, we were notified by ODEQ that ACOG was going to be our planning entity for our waste load allocation study. And, you know, this is the first we'd heard of this, we'd send them to ODEQ, and all of a sudden, they say, "No, well, now, ACOG's going to be your planning entity."
I was wondering about that.
That's great, but for ACOG to be our planning entity, we have to be a member of ACOG, which we're currently not, and we're not paying dues, and we're not on the board. So, we're kind of at a, a quandary, because ODEQ says, "They're your planning entity," but they say, "Well, we not, not going to do anything unless you cough up some dues."
Dang it.
So, and become a board member.
That feels like it.
Bluntly.
That's our two elders, pay the dues and keep going.
And realistically, with what, what's going on, we, we do need to be on that board.
I know, I wondered about why.
And so, you know, that's, that's a position I would, would like to serve in, so there's two different things here, there's membership, actual membership, do we want to become members of the board? And I believe we kind of are in a position where we have to. And then delegation of a primary delegate and an alternate delegate.
I make a motion to approve item 11, that we join membership with ACOG.
What, primary delegate?
As a...
Carl Nail. Yeah.
Oh, have we named that person, too?
He just said he wanted to do it.
Yeah. That's, we need an alternate.
Okay. I make, I move that we do approve action, membership of the board director, and designate Carl Nail as primary delegate.
Anybody want to serve as alternate?
I'm already there for the NPO, and it follows after the...
And Mike Fullerton as alternate delegate.
Sounds good.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item number 11.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Yes. Item number 12, discussion possible action, adopting resolution 2025 dash 11, approving that 1983 amended agreement, creating an association of central government, and approving amendments to the Senate Agreement as recommended by the ACOG Board of Directors on May 30th, 2024.
Still real not sure what this is about.
I know.
It means we have to, it means we have to sign up to everything that they've been doing for the last 20 years.
Pretty much, pretty much.
In fact, it's a requirement that they have for us to be on the board, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. I move you to approve item 12.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item number 12.
Check your office, where's this coming?
Hostess.
Send $800.
Okay, I don't know about that.
I think we'll be prorated this first year for about $4,300, I think.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Mike Fullerton? Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Yes. Item number 13, discussion possible action on adopting resolution 2025 dash 12 regarding project sponsorship by the City of Newcastle for a transportation alternatives program application with a minimum 20% match and maintenance commitment for the life of the project to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation 2025 TAP grant.
TAP grant for the sidewalks, safe routes down Northwest 10th. If you recall, Jeanette applied for the, the Clean Air Grant that does the exact same thing, she was encouraged to apply for both, and, and with, and hopes that she would receive one or the other, so it's for the exact same project.
Move to approve item 13.
Second. Motion second for approval, item number 13.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Yes. Item number 14, discussion possible action on scheduled city council regular meeting dates, locations, and times.
Move to approve 14. Sorry.
As presented.
He's tired.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item number 14. As presented.
Gene Reed?
Yes.
Mike Fullerton?
Yes.
Todd D'Amico?
Yes.
Marcy Wise?
Yes.
Carl Nail?
Yes. Item number 15, city manager comments.
I'll have a comment.
Item number 16, council member comments.
I say we commend the police officer for staying the entire meeting with me. No other comments.
Probably the most excitement she's had this week.
I will make a comment, it's a significant amount of time and travel that Marcy and, and Mike have made every month over the years in representing us, and Mike gives occasional updates, you make, too, at posts and everything like that, so it's good to be represented there, and I think it's going to be remarkable to be on the board, too, so...
Mike's always got my back when I say, "It's today."
I think they said, I think they said, too, with our population, we would have six votes. Ooh, they know that.
Which means we have to be there, because if we're not there, we affect the core, so you can't miss it.
I know, no, that's all you must say, "Are you going to be there?"
Yeah.
Doesn't always work with people.
Are the council member comments? Mark, he's not adjourned, so he's a German.
We should do German.
Does anybody want to take sandwiches home?
Well, we're not adjourned yet. Motion for German.
You're ready to go, sorry.
Second. Motion second for German, I'll say, "I, any opposed?" We are adjourned.
Did you say sandwiches?